Okay, we're just waiting on Joe. Apologize to everyone for that unfortunate. Not sure what happened. Where's Nicole?
Joe's son is helping him get on, so he should be on hopefully momentarily.
Back Nicole. Okay. Do you want to, um. Okay, never mind. I was gonna send you to the minutes while waiting for him, but.
Do we do that? Let me get the minutes done?
Eileen, did Joe make it into your meeting?
We all made it in, then got bounced. Fortunately, I think we all got bounced at the same time he did. I've never had that happen. Um, I don't know.
Should we do the minutes in the meantime?
Start the minutes, or do you want to wait for Joe?
Alright, you're muted.
Yes, we can.
Okay, do you want me to take a roll call? Take a roll call, or a roll here? Alright, Craig Clentner?
Yes.
Yoni Sharma? Joyce Segal? Steve Togar?
Here.
Well, Jessica Glad? Here. Wolfgang Taturis?
Here.
I think the only one not here is Joe. We'll wait on him. So we just have two sets of minutes and some resolutions that we could try and. While we're waiting for him. Do you want to handle this, Jessica?
Sure, sure. Okay, so I guess the first ones that I'm seeing are the minutes from 7:19:21.
Yes.
Are there any corrections or changes? I don't see any. So is there anyone who would like to approve those minutes?
Who approve all the minutes of 7:19:21?
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Okay, and then I see the minutes of 8:21. Anyone have any corrections or changes or additions? Don't see any. Would anyone like to move to approve those minutes?
Move approval of the minutes from the meeting of August 2nd, 2021.
Anyone to second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Okay, and then the only thing is, I'm not seeing the.
I sent a revised agenda. I don't know.
Okay.
You want me to just, okay, the first, the first resolution is calendar 3798-21 for Jinbao Tong. It was a motion, a resolution denying variance relief. Um, all the full members are eligible to vote.
Okay, would someone like to. Approve the denial of this, this resolution?
Here's Joe. Let's, okay.
Oh, okay.
Joe has shown up.
Make a motion.
I only motion to approve the denial.
Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Craig Clentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Oh.
He just bailed.
Oh. Okay, forget that. Uh, the next one is calendar 3808-21, William and Jessica Erwin, 51 Undercliffe. All full members are eligible.
Would someone like to move to approve this?
Move adoption of calendar 3808-21.
Second.
Craig Clentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
The next one is calendar 3809-21, Bruce and Randy Mizels at 5:28 Wyoming Avenue. Again, all full members are eligible.
Do we have a motion for this one?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Craig Clentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
You want us, Eileen, I see Joe on the screen.
I'm back.
Okay. Don't touch anything. Okay, the next one is calendar 3811-21, Thomas Barrett, 32 Pine Terrace East. Eligible to vote are Craig, Jody, Joy, Wolfgang, and Joe. Is there a motion?
Do you want to take it from here to ask if anyone wants to make a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Uh, motion to adopt calendar 3811-21.
Second.
Craig Clentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal? You with us, Joy?
Yes.
Okay. Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
And the last one is calendar 3813-21. Ankor and Shivani Makija, 45 Mountain View Road. All full members except for Steve are eligible. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt calendar 3813-21.
Is there a second?
A second.
Craig Clentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Alrighty. Now we have the applications.
You first can't see me, can you?
Yes, we can see you.
They can see you, Joe.
Trying to find where. I have to click to get back to my. Picture.
Top right of the black square, if you scroll onto the top, it'll say view. You probably want the gallery view. You're probably on maybe speaker view, I don't know.
I'm looking.
You just scroll up in the corner of the webinar, the black, where the black, you know, right in the corner, right corner, top right corner.
In the corner is a red X. I know what that means.
No, 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 not in your, in the corner of the webinar screen. If you, if you just scroll to the corner, to the top right corner, the word view will come up. And if you press on that, it'll bring up the different views.
I'm sorry to hold you guys up. I'm trying to find it.
If you just toggle your mouse on the screen, it should come up on the top right-hand corner.
Yeah.
Maybe this is a. Down at the bottom, there's something that looks like a camera.
That just minimizes the screens. In the upper right-hand corner, you should see, when you go up to the right-hand corner, you see there's view right below the X. You see that? If you move your mouse up to the right corner.
Alright, I see three little dots.
Yeah.
Under the X. And then to the left of that, I see a figure. I clicked on that and nothing's happening.
What about if you click on the three dots?
Uh, let's try it. Oh, I don't know. Something happened. I now see everybody and I'm back.
There we go.
Yeah. Okay, I held everybody up enough here. Alright, we're on the first application, which is a. Continuation of Bacone South, is that correct?
Yes.
It was carried from August 16th. Can you bring in the attorney, Eileen?
Yeah. Okay, that is. And I believe I'll bring over Silvio Caruso.
Is that Mr. Sukus?
Yes.
Mr. Sukus.
Good evening, Mr. Steinberg. How are you?
Okay, can you very briefly tell us where we are in this case?
Certainly. It's good to see, good evening to all the board members, to Ms. Dabitt. We initially started the hearing on this matter on June 7th of 2021. And at that time, Rich Keller testified as an engineer on behalf of Baccone South. There was, there were questions from the public and I'm not sure whether there were many, if any, from the board. We proceeded with the testimony of planner John Barry that evening. He did get through his testimony. However, it was late in the evening and we, the board did not proceed with questioning or with questioning of the public for Mr. Barry. So we did leave off there. Although we were on the calendar for August 16th, 2021. The board had a very heavy calendar that night and we were not heard. It has been carried to, until tonight. So if it pleases the, the board and you, Mr. President, I believe where we should start is probably board questioning with our planner, John Barry.
Okay, I just brought him over. Okay. Given, uh, Mr. Barry, you're on mute. You're muted, so there you go.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
This is now an opportunity for, first, the board members to ask questions of Mr. Barry based on his testimony at, I believe, the June 7th meeting. Mr. Barry, you understand that you remain under oath?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you. Oh, can I, can I maybe start?
Yeah.
The ball rolling here?
Yeah.
Just to, uh, so, Mr. Barry, if I recall, the June 7th meeting, I know it's been a while. You provided some testimony regarding availability of public parking spaces, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, was there, and I, if I recall correctly, one of the things you stated was that. The nice thing about this application from your testimony is that the restaurant is mostly in the evening use versus the parking demand of businesses in the immediate area during the day.
That's correct. The other businesses on this side of the street and further to the south and west are more daytime sorts of uses. Salon, offices, things that, that do not, boutiques, things that don't have evening hours. And the Baccone South restaurant is open only in the evening. It does not have a lunchtime hours.
Um, for, for those parking, public parking spaces that would be used by patrons of the applicant. Are they, are those spaces in competition with other evening proprietors, whether it's restaurants or other evening uses in the area, to your knowledge?
There, there is another, several other eateries across Melbourne Avenue. The survey of the parking spaces, and there was an exhibit that had been prepared by Mr. Keller that we shared. There were approximately. Eighteen parking spaces along. Uh, Melbourne between Glenwood Drive and Campbell Road, and then about another thirty parking spaces between Glenwood Drive and Balthus Row Way, moving south and west. So about forty-eight spaces on the street within a block of, of the, of the restaurant. Plus, public parking lot fourteen behind the. Businesses across the street, there's approximately twenty-two parking spaces in that lot that are typically available for hourly parking. Along with a number of other spaces available for different types of permits. Um, so for, for a small neighborhood restaurant such as, as the Baccone Restaurant with. Only a total of forty-eight seats, there, in my opinion, is ample parking. It's not a, not, not a pass-through-by kind of place, not someplace that you're going to be driving by necessarily. And it's going to call out to you, or you're going to need to scramble and find a parking space. I think that it's very likely anyone coming to the restaurant will be going there specifically, will be aware of the fact that there is no onsite parking lot. And will be prepared to find parking on the street wherever it's available.
Thank you.
I have a question. So when. When the grease traps in the restaurant are, are cleaned out, and when they're emptied and taken away, is that done from the rear of the building or from the front?
So it, and I may ask Mr. Sukus to step in because some of the discussion we had at the last hearing. The chairman Steinberg had suggested that there are certain operational aspects that may be better testified to by the proprietor rather than hearing about them secondhand from me. But that's, I think that may be between the, the attorneys here and Mr. Steinberg.
And if I, if I may, Mr. Steinberg, Mr. Taurus, the, Mr. Caruso, the proprietor of the restaurant, will be addressing that topic when he testifies.
Okay, that's fine. Are there any other questions of this witness?
I just have one. In, in parking lot fourteen, do you happen to know how many spaces are available for potential patrons of Bacone South?
Um, at, at any given time, that's, you know, subject to availability, but there are twenty-two, based on my count. And I, I went out there and, and looked at all the parking spaces and, and made notes by hand. There are twenty-two spaces that are available for hourly public parking. So those are the spaces that aren't restricted with other permit requirements, whether it be a, a business permit or a, or a resident permit. So there's, there's twenty-two of the regular metered spaces.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of this witness? Right, I think that. Uh, if that's all you have, Mr. Sukus, of this witness, we can move to your next witness.
Um, I have no further questions of Mr. Barry. I leave it to you, Mr. President, regarding questions from the public of Mr. Barry.
Yes, are there any members of the public out there, Eileen? You're muted, Eileen.
I have two hands raised. Um, the first hand is David Honeyset. I will bring him over.
Mr. Honeyset?
Uh, yes, hello.
Hi. Do you have any questions of Mr. Barry?
Uh, yes, I have, I have several questions of Mr. Barry, but I, I have, um, one question of the board before we get to Mr. Barry. Uh, my recollection of the last meeting was that, uh, Mr. Keller was not questioned by the public. Am I, am I misremembering that meeting?
Go ahead, he.
Third question.
Mr. Steinberg, I'm, I'm confident Mr. Keller was testified. There, I can't say there were many questions from the public, but there were questions. Which is why we proceeded with Mr. Barry's testimony.
No. My, my recollection is that we just moved through from Mr. Sukus, to Mr. Keller, to Mr. Barry in pretty rapid fashion. And then the meeting was adjourned.
Well, that's a good question. I am not sure that, Eileen, without viewing a. Uh, recording of the session has that information.
I have the minutes here from, in seven, I think I have the minutes. Actually, no, I don't have them on me.
My, I'm just looking at my notes very quickly, and it looks like two neighbors. Uh, asked questions of Mr. Keller. That does not, by the way, if Mr. Keller is available this evening by the applicant, that does not necessarily foreclose additional questions of.
I know the peanut.
That's.
Eileen?
Yes.
Did you have something to say?
I, I just had in my notes that I know we had questions from Ms. Pasternak, and I, I don't know who the other.
I, I think it was Mary McNatt also had some questions.
Yes, I think Mary McNatt did have a question. I don't have a copy of the minutes, but I have some rough, rough minutes.
Apparently, Mr. Honeyset, there were two. Uh, questions of Mr. Barry, of, uh, Mr.
Keller.
Keller at that time. But is Mr. Keller available tonight, Mr. Sukus?
He is available this evening, Mr. Steinberg, yes.
Mr. Honeyset, do you have any questions of him?
I, I do have some questions of Mr. Keller, but I can, I can certainly wait until after Mr. Barry. And then question at a convenient time for the board.
That's fine. Let's continue with questions of Mr. Barry, as long as he's here and he's been sworn. We can bring, uh, Mr. Keller back in a minute.
Okay.
Do you have any questions of Mr. Barry, Mr. Honeyset?
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can I just ask Mr. Honeyset, can you just provide your address, please, sir?
Uh, yes, it's David Honeyset. I live at 92 Meadowbrook Road, Short Hills. My property abuts 519 Melbourne Avenue in the rear.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I proceed to the questions, sir?
Sure, of course.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, I just wanted to make a. One, one comment quickly, and that leads to a question. The, the photo that Mr. Barry submitted during the presentation, which depicted Melbourne Avenue at 11:00 AM. Uh, on a, what, what he said was a typical day. Um, I just wanted to object that that was certainly not a typical day that I've experienced living here for fourteen years, that Melbourne Avenue is that quiet and that slow with no cars parked. And I just wanted to ask him if it would surprise him that consistently people that frequent businesses on Melbourne Avenue in this area do park on residential streets. Uh, behind this business district, whether it would be on Campbell, Meadowbrook Road, or farther down on Meadowbrook Road.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, sorry for interrupting. Would it be worthwhile? I don't know that Mr. Honeyset has been sworn.
He, he's asking questions. He doesn't need to be sworn.
He's asking you a question. Mr. Barry, do you understand the question?
Uh, I do understand the question. Um, I'm afraid I don't recall. I, I saw some signage when I was out. I don't recall whether there's a restriction on. I'm afraid I don't recall. I saw some signage when I was out. I don't recall whether there's a restriction on parking specifically on Meadowbrook or the perpendicular streets. I believe there is in a few locations. As to whether sometimes people who are patronizing businesses may park in a residential neighborhood, it could happen. I haven't personally witnessed it in this scenario. If there's no restriction on street parking, then frankly, the parking is for anyone who wishes to use it. And if there is a restriction, then it becomes a matter of enforcement and regardless of what the land use is. So I'm afraid I'm not familiar with whether or not there is a restriction in that particular location, though.
Okay, well, there's a restriction on Meadowbrook for the entire length of Meadowbrook, that there is no parking. And there is one section, small section of Campbell between Melbourne Avenue and I believe it's Wellington, that they allow two-hour parking on one side of that street.
Mr. Honeyset, based on Mr. Sukis's comment earlier, you'll have an opportunity to provide testimony, at which time you would need to be sworn. So this is just a time for questions, please.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
And then I just wanted to ask if you are aware that there's four other food establishments that are operating in the adjacent blocks, and that three of them operate evening hours currently?
Yes, I am aware of those other businesses.
And then my next question is, there's the Metropolitan Complex, which is being built currently on upper Melbourne Avenue. This is a three-story complex that has two hundred and seventy.
Sorry, I think you've frozen, sir.
It's frozen. Just offer your opinion. Hello?
Hi. Would you be able to repeat the question? I think you froze a little bit.
Yes, sorry. I was speaking about the new Metropolitan Complex that's being built on upper Melbourne Avenue, which is adjacent to this business zone.
You're referring to the former Saks Building there?
Yes. That was the former Saks Building, which is currently called the Metropolitan, is under construction. It's a two hundred and seventy apartment unit complex with some commercial property as well. And I'm just wondering if you can just speak to how you feel like that an apartment complex of this size on upper Melbourne Avenue is going to impact the parking situation? And specifically, two hundred and seventy apartments, which will have people coming to visit them in these apartments? How will we direct those people that are actually coming to visit people that are living in that complex from not parking on these spaces on upper Melbourne Avenue, which you say are adequate to support the businesses that are there?
Well, if the, if two hundred and seventy new apartments are built and occupied across the street from a restaurant, I think there'll be a significant increase in foot traffic and patrons who won't need to drive to the restaurant. As I said, we have a very small restaurant. In this case, this is not a restaurant that can accommodate a significant growth in its volume, because there's a very small room. There's simply no place to put additional patrons. So if there's any crunch on the street parking that may result from the increase in the population across the street, I think it would be more than offset by having that many patrons within walking distance, relative to what's there today.
Okay, but I wasn't necessarily speaking to the patrons walking to the restaurant. What I was speaking to was the increased congestion on Melbourne Avenue. If you have two hundred and seventy apartments, that people could potentially be visiting people that live in those apartments there on Melbourne Avenue, like where would those people be parking? Only fifty people are visiting the two hundred and seventy apartments. Where would those fifty vehicles potentially be parking?
The parking for the residential development is certainly outside the scope of this application and the concern of a two thousand square foot restaurant that's been in that location for fifty-plus years. Wherever those people will park, they will park regardless of what happens on this specific piece of property. We can only consider it in the context of the restaurant that we're discussing this evening. And I think there may be a net benefit to having so many people within walking distance that won't need to drive and park to go to the restaurant.
Okay. You testified earlier at the previous meeting that you described Bacconie South as good neighbor. And you specifically mentioned a couple of things about good neighbor behavior. I think one was that they operate with the back door of the restaurant closed, that they're courteous of neighbors in terms of noise and waste and odors. And I just wanted to ask you, because you were testifying to the fact that Bacconie was a good neighbor, that in the five hundred days that Bacconie has been operating, how many times have you been present in the evening hours to verify that it is good behavior?
So, Mr. Honeyset, that is the testimony that Mr. Steinberg felt was maybe out of bounds for me to offer, and that the proprietor of the restaurant should be the one to put on the record the different things, that the different steps that he has taken and attempts to be a good neighbor. So I'm not sure. I'll leave it to Mr. Simon if it's appropriate for me to answer that question, or if it's better that we defer that kind of testimony to Mr.
I would say this, Mr. Barry. If you can answer the question, answer it. If you can't answer it, don't answer it and say why you can't answer it.
I have not witnessed the back exterior of the building in operation in the evening, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Two other, two other short questions, sir. I was just wondering, will offloading and deliveries and waste disposal be carried out exclusively through the front of the restaurant? Or are they allowed to be used in the alleyway, or allowed to be executed in the alleyway buffer area behind Bacconie?
It's my understanding that that may be in flux, and I'm not sure where we stand on it as of today. So I think it's better to defer that to the proprietor of the restaurant, because I may not have an accurate answer.
Okay, thank you. And just one last question. Is waste grease considered appropriate to be stored in the buffer area close to residential property lines?
When properly handled and stored and kept in a sealed container, I feel that it could be appropriate.
It could be appropriate, or it is appropriate to code for Melbourne Township.
Well, the reason we're here is because we don't provide the required buffer area. It was the hundred and twenty-five-foot buffer that was required in the ordinance as of the filing of this application. So we do not meet that standard, and we are here seeking the relief as such for a restaurant that's been in this location for decades. And that's why we're attempting to mitigate circumstances, because we can't store things elsewhere outside the buffer area, because there is no space on the property outside.
I think you might be frozen.
Was I frozen?
No, I heard.
I think my screen froze, sir.
We will be addressing the waste.
Last, I apologize, but can you?
There will be additional testimony from the proprietor addressing the waste storage. The reason why we're before the board is because we don't have the buffer space that's required. And part of the standard that we're trying to achieve here is to balance any potential impacts. And if there are conditions that the board can impose, if there are steps that the restaurant can take to be a good neighbor, that's what we're here to hopefully accomplish.
Okay, I was just, my understanding was that waste was not permitted to be stored in this area. And I'm assuming that waste grease is considered waste.
That, Mr. Chair, that's nothing that is necessarily before this board in connection with the application. There's been no violation cited or anything of the sort.
Agreed. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why the, why the way that this area has its depicted in the site plan, how, why it's being used in a different way than it's depicted in the site plan. In the site plan, they show an HVAC unit, they show one small cabinet, I think, but there's no depiction of a waste grease tank.
I think, Mr. Chair, that might be a question more appropriate for Mr. Keller to elaborate on. Mr. Keller did draft the drawings that were presented in this application.
Thank you. And you will have Mr. Keller available this evening?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else have any questions of this witness? Eileen?
Over, Jean Pasternak, who has questions?
Ms. Pasternak?
Yes.
Can't hear her.
Can't hear you.
The connection is poor.
We can't hear you, Ms. Pasternak.
Let's move on.
Yeah, you can, you can call back in at the phone number and ask questions that way, but.
It looks like she may be trying.
She's trying to do that now. We're still not hearing you. Can't hear you, Ms. Pasternak.
You want to go on to another question, and maybe she can?
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I have one more question from Jeffrey Feld. I will bring him over.
Yes. Mr. Feld.
I am starting my video. Do you hear me?
We can hear you.
Now you see me.
Now we can see you as well.
All right, I'm Jeffrey Feld. I'm a citizen resident at eleven Alexander Lane, Short Hills. I also represent, I'm an attorney, the new owners of the property that's adjacent to this applicant at five twenty-one Melbourne Avenue.
Mr. Mr. Feld, hold on a second. Who is the client that you represent?
They, we bought the property, the deed was recorded in July fifteenth. The name, the deed has to be changed. It's right now it's five fourteen, five twelve M A Partners LLC. The deed was recorded on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
You represent the parties that was the, that accepted the deed. Is that correct?
Yes, the new owners of that property.
Okay, and can you please again give us the address of that property?
That is five twenty-one Melbourne Avenue. If you're looking at this location, it's to the left. It's the Forma Gani Russ property, if that would help the public understand what we're talking about.
Mr. Chairman, could we also get who the partners of that entity are?
Right now, it's an LLC. The question is, they're the recording. Right this moment, I am not at liberty to disclose the equity holders, but I am a resident of this town, and my questions right now go to the testimony that we just heard about parking.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. Hold on a second, Mr. Feld. Are you asking questions?
Yes.
Sir, sir, hold on a second. Are you asking questions in your individual capacity as a resident, or are you asking questions on behalf of your client?
For this witness, I will ask questions in my capacity as a resident.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Barry, before you talked about where the patrons would park, where do the employees park for this new location?
That question may be better served for the owner of the restaurant, who can give you in great detail where he and his employees park.
All right. The next few minutes goes, you talked about this location being a restaurant for the last fifty years. Do you know the history of what locations were there when it was a luncheonette?
I know anecdotally, I've heard that it's been, it was a luncheonette for many, many years. I have a tax card that was part of my exhibit from nineteen eighty-four that showed a picture of the property when it was the Glenwood Luncheonette. So nineteen eighty-four is thirty-seven years ago. So suppose we have evidence in the record that shows it as a restaurant since at least then.
Do you know what the hours of operation was when it was a luncheonette?
I believe it was open mornings and mid-days. I don't know the exact hours of operation. The business had been closed for some time.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just point out, testimony regarding the prior use was given extensively by Rich Keller during his testimony on June seventh. He is available tonight, if there's any follow-up.
Well, the testimony is here, we're getting the impression that this, that the restaurant that's there today is the same type of restaurant that it's been for, for the last fifty years. And there's a big issue as to the intermediary restaurant, that being Tilly's. And before, Mr. Barry used the word questions of matters of enforcement about maybe ten minutes ago, that those are issues of matters of enforcement. There's real serious questions as to this intermediary restaurant, that being Tilly's. Now, you said, do you know what Tilly's was? What kind of operation was that? Was that similar to the restaurant that was a luncheonette?
I believe, just based on looking up some internet reviews and articles, that it was a restaurant that operated in the evenings. They have had lunch as well, I'm not sure.
All right. Did you see if they ever got, obtained all the approvals that they needed to operate?
Well, there's building permits that were entered, I believe they were entered into record. Mr. Sukis can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we did enter a stamped plan set into the record with the various subcode official stamps on it. But that plan set had failed to obtain zoning approval, which is part of the issue that we're faced with, I believe, this evening. However, there's no distinction in the ordinance between different types of restaurants, whether you're a lunchtime cafe or an evening dinner restaurant. And in my view, this has been a restaurant for at minimum thirty-seven years.
Well, I mean, I watched the last meeting, talking about Jersey Mike's, and we were told to public that there's different types of restaurants. There's a difference between a fast food restaurant and a luncheonette. Do you agree to that?
There may be some operational differences. I did not offer that testimony, but there's no distinction in the boroughs or the township's ordinance about that.
So you don't think there's distinction that all restaurants are the same, in your opinion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to object to this line of questioning to the extent that the Jersey Mike's application was significantly different than this application. Jersey Mike's involves a new use in a space. This is a use that's continuing. But in any event, I'm going to object to Mr. Feld's question.
I think there was issues about setbacks that are similar, and there was issue, it's different issues. I disagree with you, Mr. Sukis. There was different issues as what constituted a restaurant, because we heard testimony that a Jersey Mike's manufacture, assembles food, where there's a difference between operations that assemble foods and operations that create food for people that are ordering, coming to the restaurant. And that was the testimony at the last meeting. Mr. Barry, are you familiar with the amended master plan?
That was the testimony at the Jersey Mike's application.
Yeah. Mr. Feld, I did not offer any of that testimony. I was not.
No, I'm just asking you about the amended, did you review Melbourne's amended master plan?
Are you referring to the two thousand eighteen master plan reexamination?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Do you believe that this restaurant would not affect the suburban nature of the town?
Only if it had been doing so already for the past thirty-seven plus years. I believe that this has been a restaurant. It's a neighborhood business in a neighborhood business zone. And it has been for decades.
So it's your opinion that all restaurants are the same?
That's not what I said.
Well, you're saying that it's a continuing restaurant. Well, you're saying that it's a continuing restaurant operation. And it would not change the nature of the suburban neighborhood?
Well, some, some people get up early, some people stay up late. That restaurant that had, may have been there before catered to a breakfast crowd, this caters to an evening crowd. They have different hours of operation, they may have different patrons, but at the end of the day, they are an operation that's cooking food and serving it to people.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, I do believe the ordinance defines restaurants and fast food differently.
That's, that is correct, but Eileen, is there anyone else out there who has questions for this witness?
All right, I'll bring Jean Pasternak over again. Hopefully we'll have better luck.
Miss Pasternak. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Do you have questions for this witness?
Miss Pasternak, your audio is no good. You might be, you might actually be better off if you just turn off your camera. And try to speak and, you know, can you talk now? No.
No, we're still not hearing you. So I'm going to rule that. Eileen, is there anyone else besides Mrs. Pasternak?
I see no other hands raised.
Are there any other witnesses that you have? I think you indicated that Mr. Keller was here and that you would be prepared to put him back on the stand. Is that correct?
Yeah, whatever order you prefer, Mr. Chairman, I have, Mr. Keller is available for questions, but I do have testimony and. From the proprietor, Silvio Caruso, who will be my last witness, whether, whether.
Let's hear him first.
Okay, that's fine. Eileen, if you would bring Mr. Caruso in. Silvio, if you could turn on your camera and mic.
Okay, I think he's on.
We can see you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, I think Mr. Steinberg is frozen right now.
I don't think, no, I don't think.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Steinberg.
Do you want me to swear him in?
Yes, please.
If you would just raise your right hand, sir, please. Do you swear from the test, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Okay, if you just state your name and address for the record, please.
Silvio, S I L V I O, Caruso, C A R U S O. 27 Beverly Road, Cedar Grove, New Jersey, 07009.
Did you say Cedar Grove?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Joe.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Okay, Silvio, before we begin, because we are on Zoom, I'm going to ask that you. Wait until I finish my question before you provide the answer. We do have a stenographer here. As well as various board members who are on Zoom, so we want the record and your testimony to be as clear as possible. Do you understand?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Caruso, you are the owner of Bacconi South Restaurant, correct?
That's correct.
And Bacconi South is located at 519 Milburn Avenue, correct?
That's correct.
Please tell the board how long Bacconi South has been operating in Short Hills.
It's been now 15 months since June 2020.
Prior to beginning your operation in, in Short Hills, Bacconi South operated in South Orange, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and what led you from South Orange to Short Hills?
My lease was over in South Orange and I just need to relocate.
Was there anything about this particular property that led you to, to locate the restaurant in Short Hills? Were there any characteristics?
Oh, yes, this town is beautiful and, and I find this place. And the place with a turnkey operation, everything brand new, everything is beautiful. I mean, who doesn't want to be in this town?
What kind of restaurant is Bacconi South? What kind of cuisine?
Italian, no, and south cooking.
You're currently under lease with the owner, correct?
That's correct.
When you moved into South Orange, you did not apply for a conditional use permit. Why didn't you apply?
Mr. Sugas, do you mean that when he moved into Milburn?
I apologize, when he moved to Milburn or Short Hills, yes, thank you, Mr. Steinberg.
I don't think that this was necessary because I, I came in and I saw this beautiful restaurant already built up as a restaurant. Turnkey operation. I thought he was ready for a restaurant and, and, and a very good one too. Everything update.
When you. When you saw the property, did it already have a kitchen and a hood in place?
Everything was in place, everything brand new.
Were you required to perform any demolition or renovation work before you moved in?
No, no at all.
Do you have planned any demolition or renovation work on the premises?
No, absolutely not.
Have you altered any exterior lighting on the premises?
No.
What did your, what are Bacconi South's days and hours of operation?
I open 4:30 to 9:30. Every single day, seven day week, and my last reservation, it's eight o'clock, 8:00 PM at night.
So you said 4:30 till 9:30?
9:30.
So that's five hours a day, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
How many employees do you have on the premises at any given time? And what are their?
It's about four of us.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Four, I have two in the kitchen and I have two in the front.
Okay, the kitchen are your chefs?
Yes.
And who is in the front?
Myself, one server and my son.
How many cars are used by you and your employees to travel to and from work?
Two car and sometime on a weekend, I use my car, so it's three car, one day a week, otherwise two car.
Bacconi South does not provide delivery service, correct?
No. Correct.
What's the seating capacity of the restaurant?
It's 48.
As far as you receive deliveries of food products, et cetera, you're a restaurant. Where are, are deliveries made through the front door, through the back, or otherwise?
Only from the front door, only from the front.
Is there any access to the restaurant from the rear at all?
No, only the front door, the front entrance.
And why is there no access through the rear?
I don't want to use the back to just don't, I just don't want to disturb people who live in the back of the restaurant.
Well, that's because there's a lock back there, right? You can't access that.
No, I don't have the key for the lock. That's correct.
The deliveries are made through the front.
Yes.
When you get deliveries, is it delivery trucks that come to make those deliveries or some other type of vehicle?
Like a medium box truck.
Great. Now, in terms of your food preparation. Do you use any deep fryer in the course of preparing food?
Well, I have. Maybe 10% only with the deep fry, just to do the fried calamari. Fried squid.
So you.
90%.
Okay, sorry.
90%, 90%, it's all saute oven.
Gotcha, so only 10% of your business is, which is fried calamari?
If, if that's 10%, only the calamari.
Okay. The restaurant has a fire suppression system, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And that was in place prior to your taking occupancy of the restaurant, correct?
That's correct.
When you took, when you took, took out the lease, when you became a tenant at this property. Did the restaurant have a state-of-the-art hood in the kitchen with ventilation?
Yes, definitely.
How, how would you describe the hood in the kitchen?
This is a 12-foot wood hood. With a beautiful, the most important thing is very, very silent. As opposed to the hood that I used to have to other restaurants.
Would you say that this hood, how old was the hood when, when you got to the restaurant?
I'm going to say four years old, it was installed for the previous owner of the restaurant, I believe, in 2016.
And the previous owner. And the previous owner was Tilly's, correct?
That's correct.
Does your vent. Is there an exhaust pipe through the roof?
Yes.
Have you had any work performed on that exhaust?
Yes.
Please tell the board what work you had done.
I have the gentleman turned the head. Toward the street and he built a cage in the back. To don't get the smoke going to my neighbor.
So, so you had worked to redirect the exhaust?
That's correct.
And you redirected it away from the residential neighborhood behind the restaurant, correct?
Yes.
What, what other work did you have at the, done on the rooftop regarding the exhaust?
I make him install. A back wall, a square back wall around the fan.
Are you trying to say a screen?
Yes, a screen, that's correct.
And what was the reason for that screen?
For the smoke and, and got the odor to go to my neighbor.
Away from your neighbor, you mean, right?
Away from my neighbor, I'm sorry.
In terms of the alleyway behind the restaurant, did you, did you perform any renov, any work or cleanup work in the back?
Yes, definitely.
What type of work?
I clean up all back, when I, when I got to this restaurant, you can even walk in a back, that's how much. I have to use garbage was there. I clean up everything, I install a little piece of a carpet, I mean, it's like. This is like my own backyard and my house. That's a cleanies.
What remains in the backyard?
Basically, nothing, because I will have the, the tank of the burned oil being removed in the next three weeks.
Okay, so you just, you just mentioned that there's a, an oil tank back there, cooking oil, of course, correct?
Yes.
So that cooking oil tank, was that there when you took occupancy of the restaurant?
No, the, the company brings from South Orange to here.
Okay, so that's your tank, right?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any plans for that tank or do you plan on having it remain in the back there?
No, it's, it will be removed in about the most three weeks.
What are your arrangements going to be for the disposal of waste cooking oil after you remove that cooking oil tank?
I will reuse the same content, the five, the five gallon container. I would reuse the same container put inside and bring to someone who recycle directly. Which is about once a week.
And again, your waste oil basically is from your deep fryer, which, which is about 10% of your business, correct?
That's correct.
Do you, are you storing any garbage in the back alley?
No.
Please advise the board what arrangements you have for garbage disposal for the restaurant.
I have an arrangement with Mr. Bruce Jeffrey. That every single night, I take my garbage out into my van. And I will dispose across the street at 518 Milburn Avenue. In a garbage container of Mr. Jeffrey, every single night.
Just clarified, for purposes of the record, please advise the board who Bruce Jeffrey is.
Yeah, Mr. Bruce Jeffrey will be my landlord.
Right, he's your landlord and he's giving you permission to use his dumpster across the street for waste purposes.
That's correct.
And that's every night, correct?
Every single night.
You have a door in the back of the restaurant opening into the alleyway, correct?
Yes.
How do you prevent issues such as kitchen noises, kitchen odors from. Going outside the door into the residential neighborhood behind the restaurant?
The back door, it's basically 90% of the time closed. I close the door always.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I have no further questions for Mr. Caruso.
Are there any questions from board members of this witness?
I have a question. Regarding, regarding the removal of oil, I know that the fryer oil is removed. You're, you're going to say it's going to be removed weekly directly in a five-gallon container. Is there also the removal of grease from grease traps in the restaurant?
Yes.
And is that conducted through the front of the restaurant or through the back of the restaurant?
To the front of the restaurant.
Okay, so the whole, so the truck parks out front, the pipes, you know, the hoses run through the front of the restaurant and then.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Can I ask a, just a clarification question?
Yes, please.
Um, Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
At the beginning, you said that the back door has a lock that you don't have access to. And then you said at the end of your testimony that the back door is closed 90% of the time.
No, no, I'm sorry, it's a lock on the back, the gate, it's a lock on the gate.
Okay.
Next door.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, further to that, the gate you're talking about, that looks like it's leading to like a small alleyway between the buildings, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Um, I, I'm just curious if, if the back is, is locked, you can't exit through the back door and actually get out, it's. Is that the second means of egress for the restaurant? So, I guess my question is just, it brought up to my mind a fire safety question, which is, can you get out two ways?
Well, this is a good question, because fire department, fire department was here and told the gentleman to unlock the gate.
Yeah.
Because for security, exactly, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so, so someone might be unlocking this gate?
Yes. That would be the gentleman across the street, Enzo Pizzeria, Enzo.
I see, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions by board members? Eileen, is there anyone in the audience who has? Eileen, is there anyone in the audience who has questions for this witness?
Yes, I have three hands raised. The first person I'll bring over is Bonnie Adams.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question, I'm sorry?
There's no question just now.
There's no question at the moment. We're waiting, we're waiting for somebody to come over.
I'm sorry.
Bonnie Adams?
Hi.
Are you there?
Yeah. Yes, I'm here, I I have a quick question.
I need to get you sworn first.
No, no, she she doesn't need to be, she 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 just needs to provide her address at this point, that's all, she does not need to be sworn, she's just asking questions. Ms. Adams?
Yep, my address is ninety-four, mi- ninety-four Meadow Brook Road, Short Hills. Um, directly, um, also behind, um, the Piccone Restaurant. In in one of the last me, in one of the last meetings, I had mentioned that, uh, last summer, um, shortly after the restaurant opened, myself and many of my neighbors, um, began seeing mice on our property. Uh, I don't know if you guys recall this or have it in your minutes, but, uh, it was shocking to me. Um, and also to several of my neighbors who've lived here for a long time and have never had that problem. Um, was this issue ever looked into, was it part of an impact study? Uh, n- nobody knocked on my door, so I don't know if anyone looked into this as part of, you know, considering this, because, yes, there were other, maybe other restaurants there, but something's different. I noticed people were sitting outside and eating, um, on the on the sidewalk, um, you know, at night. And I don't know if that contributed, but something definitely is different from just previous restaurants or establishments in that building. So just wondering, again, if anything was done after those comments were made by several of my neighbors, um, you know, in previous meetings about just the impact of having another restaurant open up.
I'm not sure that that's a question necessarily for Mr. Caruso, although I'm sure to any vermin, uh, extermination plan he may have.
I can answer that question.
Go ahead.
Uh, when, uh, when I finally have this place, uh, this place was closed for about six months. And they must leave and they leave some kind of food in a restaurant. So I did clean up everything and, uh, since then I have my, uh, company exterminator. This is very, very clean. So let's keep in mind also that, yeah, I saw few of those anything came out of the old building next to mine last year. But I I clean up everything here soon I got in, like I said, this place was closed for about six months.
Mr. Adams, does that, does that answer your question?
Not quite, um, I mean, I don't, I don't know if, you know, cleaning up a place is going to prevent future infestations, but I'm just trying to figure out, is there a long-term plan to mitigate this? Um, because, you know, we still are, we still have, you know, mousetraps and, you know, blue traps around just because we are living right behind this restaurant now. And just want to know what will be done on an ongoing basis to prevent this issue from just being persistent. I mean, we we do not want to live with these, you know.
We understand your question, Mr. Caruso.
Yes, I do. Yes, uh, yes, very well, I do have, uh, a company exterminator who comes here once a month and everything is very clean. I have all the monthly, uh, thing to show you. Yeah, everything has been very, very clean, is nothing of, uh, of any of those, um, anymore.
Mr. Simon, if, is it appropriate for me to ask questions of the questioners at this point or not?
No.
No, I think not.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions from the wo- from the audience?
Yes, I have more. Okay, Mr. David Honeyset, uh, David Honeyset, Oyen, Owo Lavi and Jeffy Phil have questions. Let me see if I can bring one over.
Mr. Honeyset.
Yes, sir.
Questions of this witness?
Uh, yes, I I have I have a few. Um, I would just like to disclose before I start questioning that, I I share the concerns of Mr. Caruso, because I'm also in the restaurant business and I've been in for about thirty years. I understand all of his concerns with running a restaurant and running it well, so it does not impact neighbors and residents. My my first question is, um, it seems that you had a very successful business in South Orange. And you moved from South Orange to, uh, Milburn into a much smaller space. Uh, and I'm just wondering, what, what was such a huge attraction to such a smaller space? Moving from South Orange?
There's only one answer, this beautiful town, I love this town. Even though the place was much smaller, I love this area and it's close to South Orange.
And then the the next question is, um, have you have you managed to maintain a lot of your South Orange clientele at the new restaurant?
Yes, quite a few.
What what would you say the percentages of clientele that's coming from the South Orange area to Milburn?
Uh, twenty-five, thirty percent.
So that's twenty-five or thirty percent of your clientele that would need parking outside the restaurant as opposed to residents of the Glenwood area that would be walking there or people walking from the potentially new metropolitan complex?
Yes, I believe so.
Um, Tilly, Tilly's closed down, um, approximately how many months before you took over the location at five nineteen Milburn Avenue?
When I, when I saw this restaurant, the first time it was in November of two thousand nineteen and it was closed. November of nineteen.
And were were you aware at the time when you started looking at this restaurant space that the the restaurant that you saw that was completely renovated and state-of-the-art had never received any of the variances in order to operate in that space for the four years they were there?
I I'm sorry, I don't understand your question, about me or about the the tenant before me?
The previous tenant had never received the proper variances in order to operate in that space?
They never told me, no one told me anything.
And do you, do you think it's the the responsibility of the landlord or the responsibility of the the business owner to research and do due diligence to find out the necessary permits and applications necessary to operate a business in the township you're in?
I'm gonna object to that question, but you can answer it, of course.
Well, it it, I would have never thought that I needed this when I saw uh, this restaurant, already fixed as a restaurant, you know, uh, you just open the door and you start working, everything brand new, I would have never imagined that I need those.
Okay, you 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 stated that you have, uh, four employees working in the restaurant?
Yes.
Uh, and you, so you you said you have two cooks in the kitchen?
Yeah.
Is that correct? And you have, you have no dishwashers or cleaners or porters in the restaurant?
I have, I have one dishwasher who come the weekend, Friday, Saturday.
Okay, and in the and in the front of the house, it's just yourself and one other person, you stated?
Myself, a server and my son.
So, so, and that's every day, there's three people in the front of the house, including yourself?
Well, my son come weekend, only weekend.
Okay, so the the maximum number of employees in the space is is how many on your busiest day?
On a busiest day, that will be six. That's the busiest day, because I I never really get that busy. It's a small place.
Um, do you, do you have any, uh, outside speakers at Picone? Do you have any speakers that are outside in front of the restaurant that could play music that is audible on the street?
I used to have last year and I, uh, uh, took them off.
So they've been, they've been removed?
Yes. That's correct.
Um, and do you do you keep the the rear door of the kitchen closed at all times while the restaurant is operating?
I try almost the all time, ninety percent, yes. I will do my best.
And would you, would you permit the kitchen to have a, say, a stereo system or a radio?
No, absolutely not.
No, so there's no, no stereo system and no radio present or
No.
Been present in that space?
No. That will bother me first, because I lost my concentration, I don't want this.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, when you said you receive all of your deliveries through the front?
Yes.
So how many, how many deliveries do you receive per day?
Per day, per day, no one, I receive a delivery once a week and once every two weeks.
So what?
Once a week.
Once a week you receive a delivery?
Once a week, twice a week. The most weekly.
I mean, I know that you said that you're you're very concerned about, uh, the impact to residents specifically with smoke from the exhaust. So I'm wondering if you can, um, just describe maybe in a little bit of detail, any other efforts that you've done to mitigate the impact of odor to the residential neighborhood?
I called my, the gentleman who cleaned my, uh, exhaust system and he, he kind of fixed the fan going through, toward the street. And he built, um, some kind of filter around the fan about four feet higher.
Okay.
So the smoke don't go to the back.
Okay, a a a filter or a a partition of some kind?
It's it's a partition, yes, yeah.
And then I have, uh, a couple of questions about the the buffer area, meaning meaning the area behind your restaurant. You have the kitchen. Um, do you ever store, um, used mops or towels or aprons or dishwashing chemicals or other chemicals in that area? Or is it, uh, only specifically items that are on the site plan?
Well, it is some chemical that I have inside the little shade, I put inside the shade. I have a shade that I put all those chemical inside, few.
All right, and do you think that that's, um, safe?
Yes, they are inside the shade, it's locked.
Okay, so it's never left open, the shed?
No, no, this is, uh, you know, soap.
Okay. Have you ever received any violations for the, for the, how the back area has been kept?
Yes, at the beginning that I was here.
The beginning, so you would say you received the violation, uh, when approximately?
I'm gonna say, uh, a year ago.
Uh, the Milburn Police Department respond to your restaurant to report that, uh, somebody had called to say there was a lot of loud noise coming or disturbance coming from your restaurant?
Yes, that came once.
That came once?
It was on Saturday night, it was nine thirty. And, uh, they told me that they receive a call of a disturbance in the back, but everybody left, there was no one in the restaurant. And I I told the gentleman to come to check the kitchen and they kind of smiled at me and they left, it was no one here at the restaurant. So they must have called from before that, earlier, probably.
Okay.
I guess once, only once.
And there's, is there ever an incident where you allow, uh, employees to congregate in that back area? Which I would like to point out is only thirteen point eight-six feet from a residential property line, where you would allow employees to congregate there and talk at the end of the night or play music or discuss?
No, absolutely not, but that they happened once and I stopped that. Once that happened and I stopped all that, the same night.
And are you, are you speaking specifically about the night that I spoke with you in the alleyway behind your restaurant?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was you, you, Mr. David, yes.
Yes, it was, sir, that was me.
Yes. I'm sorry, I don't recognize you.
Yeah, it's difficult, and it was dark. My last question for you is, uh, you said that you have an arrangement for waste with, uh, Bruce Jeffries?
Yes.
The landlord of your building, the owner of your building. Do you, do you also have an arrangement with Mr. Jeffries for, uh, recycling as well?
Uh, I do the recycling in the front, I put all the bottle in the front of the restaurant on a Wednesday, on a Wednesday night.
So the the recycling is, it's, it's the residential recycling that's picking up your recycling then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's not a commercial card or it's actually the residential recycling? Paid for by residential tax dollars? Okay, those are all my questions, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Eileen?
Yes, I am gonna bring over Oyen Owo Lavi.
Can you tell us? This room is my.
Hi, can you hear me?
What is your address, please?
Um, I live on forty-six Maple Street in Milburn. And I have, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I have a comment slash, um, question.
Not the time for comments, this is the time for questions.
Question, okay, I have a, sure, I have a question. Um, I really feel for the residents, um, who are, you know, being affected, uh, by this. My question is, I heard, um, Mr. Caruso, if I'm saying your name correctly, I heard you, um, speak regarding the back door of your restaurant, um, being locked all the time. Um, and I I also, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I also heard that the person to open the back door, um, was, um, someone from Enzo's. So I just wonder if you ever have fire or any other type of emergency, um, how would people escape, what is the capacity of your restaurant? And, you you know, I I I would think that people should be able to escape both from the back door and from the front door. Um, that's one question, my second question would be, um, regarding parking.
Let's let him answer the first question first.
Okay.
First of all, I do want to correct you. The testimony, as I understand it, was that it was not the back door that was locked. It was a gate, uh, then to the to the street from the common area in the back.
So people can still get out from the back?
Yes.
Okay, so my second question is when people are parking, um, I, I, you know, I, I've visited that area a couple of times. They do have to go and make turns, um, into the side of the restaurant, which is impacting, um, that side street. And I would just like to know what kind of safety has been put in place when, when, um, children are actually standing on the corner, uh, on that corner trying to catch the bus to school? Um, or when they are being dropped off from school? I just, I'm just very worried about safety concerns for our children on that side road. So, uh, have you done any, um, studies regarding what time our school buses, you know, drop off children in that corner? And what do you have planned? You know, what plan do you have in place to make sure that our children are safe?
This is a question from Mr. Caruso?
Yes, this is a question for Mr. Caruso.
Well, I never make the right turn into the side street. Uh, if I come here, when I come here, it's four thirty after the school for the kids. And, uh, I just park on the street myself and I feed the meter.
So the, 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 the school that are at, um, around, the, the school buses try, uh, start dropping off around that time. So I just wanted to know if you've, you know, thought about that?
Yes, of course.
And do you have any plan of, you know, what do you, what are your plans when you have customers coming to your restaurant, parking in those areas where school buses will be letting kids out?
Señora, my customer coming to my restaurant way after five o'clock. I have no one who come here at four or four thirty, we have five. My, my, uh, the customer who comes here is between five thirty-six to eight o'clock the most.
But you open at four o'clock?
I'm not open at four, I open at five. I'm here at four, I come here four, four thirty, but I open at five. It's actually five to nine thirty. But my last reservation and people understand it's eight o'clock. I just don't want to disturb anyone in this area from the back.
Okay, my next question is, you said you put out your recycle the night before. Um, so what, and, and you don't open until five o'clock. So what happened if you put out your recycle the night before? And then the next morning, if there's any issue with the recycling, um, truck coming to pick up your recycle? Is there anyone that will come to carry the recycle, recycle, recycles, um, out of the front of your restaurant? Because that means that it will sit there until you get there to open it at five o'clock. Um, uh, do you have any plans, um, in place for that?
Well, this, this is a good question. And, I mean, I cannot help if the people not gonna pass by, but, uh, yes, I would remove in some other way if I know.
Yeah, but you're not gonna know because you're not going to get to your restaurant until five o'clock.
I mean, uh, this is a very tough question for me. If those people don't pass by to pick up the recycle, maybe I have to find some other way then.
So, um, so do you have, so do you have any, so do you have any plans for, you know, a situation like this occurring? Because sometimes your recycle may not come because, you know, you're using it town recycling. Do you have any other plan for yourself? To be able to carry your own recycling, your, your cycles?
Yes, I will find some other way, yes, that's, of course.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Eileen, are there any other questioners in the audience?
Yes, there is one more. It's Jeffrey Feld.
All right, um, good evening, Mr. Caruso. My name, I'm here as a resident, I live in Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. I just want to go through some history here. When you operated in South Orange, what was the seating capacity in that facility?
It was, uh, one hundred people.
One hundred? And the capacity in this location is forty-eight. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Um, you said you visited the site for the first time in November two thousand nineteen. Who introduced you to the site?
I was passing by in this town and I find the place by myself.
And is it true that your former location is part of a redevelopment plan and the property has been torn down?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Um, in June two thousand twenty, were you denied a cafe application?
No.
You were not denied a cafe application by the Melbourne?
I, I was denied the first time, then I read that the cafe, then I read that the second time.
When were you granted the cafe? So you were denied in June, when were you granted a cafe application for recall?
I believe that was still in June because I read that the application twice. The first time I did the wrong.
All right. In June two thousand twenty, did you meet with the former mayor and the BA at your location?
Yes.
Discuss the denial? Yes, your testimony, yes?
Yes, but the, we, we discussed about this issue now, yes. Jacqueline, that was Jacqueline.
The former mayor?
Yes.
And, and what was your discussion about?
She was, she, she explained to me that I have to go through all this to get my, to get my son, my sign outside because I don't know at the time, all those things that I was going through, I have no idea.
So, are you, were you represented by attorney when you entered into this lease with Mr. Jeffries?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to object to this line of questioning. It really doesn't have anything to do with the application itself. It seems like, it seems that this, this has something to do more with the previous administration, but certainly not in this case.
Well, well, the question is, in June, he's denied a, a cafe application. Mr. Caruso, when did you file your original application with the zoning board?
That was sometime the end of November, probably, with my first lawyer.
Of twenty twenty?
Yes.
Would it refresh your recollection if I say, say that you signed an affidavit dated October sixth, two thousand twenty?
Probably, I, I don't remember, I'm sorry.
All right. I mean, it's part of the record here. Would it refresh your recollection that you signed a rider? That said, the use variance swept by the applicant has been granted to its predecessor restaurant? And there's no difference in the type of restaurant that the applicant is operating at the site? Did you sign it, did you?
Mr. Mr. Feld, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you maybe provide a little bit of a foundation as to what you're talking about? So then Mr. Caruso can answer the question, please?
All right, a part of it is, is the delay, he says he found the site in November of two thousand nineteen. He opens up in June two thousand twenty. He meets the former BA, he meets the former mayor and the BA. They told him he needs, basically his testimony is just a sign. He's denied a cafe application. An application is filed with the zoning board in October sixth, two thousand twenty. There's a representation that the prior owner, I mean, operator of that location, which was Tilly's, had obtained all zoning and approvals. I just want to know, what did he rely upon to make that certification in the application to this board?
Why is that relevant tonight?
Well, the question, the relevancy is, the question is, we're telling everyone that this is a restaurant, it's the same type of restaurant. Mr. Caruso just testified that he's opened seven days a week. Tilly's was only open five, basically the same type of limited hours. And everyone's saying this is a continued operation. I think Mr. Steinberg, at the first meeting, you said this was not a grandfather clause case, nor an estoppel case. And about before, we all heard about it's a restaurant that's been always a restaurant at this location. We also heard people testifying about being good neighbors. To me, a good neighbor is someone that complies with the law. I just want to know when, why the delay? If he opened up in June, he was denied a cafe application permit in June of two thousand twenty. Why did it take till October to get to file the original application? Then there's an amended application that's going to be filed sometime in March. No modifications to the representations that are contained in the original application. And I just want to know what is going on here? When we also have an application, with all due respect to Ms. David, that does not bear her signature that was ever completed, based on the one that's on posted on the website? I'm just trying to figure out what is going on in this town, because before we heard about enforcement.
Whoa, 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 Mr. Feld, Mr. Feld. Now's the time for you to ask questions.
I, I asked him, I'm asking him the question, what due diligence did he do in October two thousand twenty to make the representation to this quasi judicial board that all the permits have been in zone, that he complied, that the applicant had complied with the law? And don't forget, this application was signed by
Whoa, 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 stop, stop, stop. You, you, you asked him a que, ask him, you just asked a question. And why don't you repeat the question, the one sentence question that's an appropriate question, that he could try to answer?
In October two thousand twenty, what did you, due diligence did you do before you made a sworn representation to this quasi judicial board?
I'm going to object to this question to the extent, at the time, Mr. Caruso was represented by predecessor counsel, Joseph Nitti, not me. Therefore, I, the question is not appropriate. That's a question that's more appropriate for his attorney, who prepared the application for him at that time. Well, 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 Mr. Sukis, without getting too much into the weeds, if Mr. Caruso signed the application with regard to factual statements contained in it, I think at least the question's a fair question and Mr. Caruso can answer it if he, if he can.
I, I am so sorry. I, I don't quite understand the question. You know, I am from Italy. I, I, I got, I got lost on this, I'm sorry. I mean, I can cook, I can do a restaurant, but I can not answer this question. I have another lawyer who did that, Mr. Nitti. So whatever I sign, my lawyer told me to sign. I don't know what to answer.
Mr. Sukis, do you, you have something you want to say?
Um, nothing more than I have already. I, I think that this
Okay, I'm sorry. Restate the question, please.
I think we have an answer that you rely on in October. I just want to, we'll go to a different area avenue. You have employees that are parking. Where, do they park on the street and feed the meters all day? Or do they, have they obtained permits to park in the municipal lots?
I have a permission for, uh, Mr. Bruce Jeffrey to park two car at five eighteen Melbourne Avenue.
Is that permission in writing?
Uh, I'm not sure. I mean, I asked him, he gave me the permission.
So you're parking in another property owned by Mr. Jeffries, who allows you to empty your garbage in his chute? All right, I, I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions, Eileen?
I'm gonna attempt to bring Jean Pasternak back. We'll try again with Jean. I know she's been trying to get over here, so let's see how we do.
This Pasternak, we're gonna try one more time.
Fingers crossed. You with us, Jean?
Jean Pasternak.
She can start you herself.
There we go.
I'm trying.
Okay, so far, so good.
I'm trying, sorry, this is
I can hear you well, though.
Okay, well, technology is obviously not my forte.
During the crowd.
Yeah, let me just ask this of, um, the witness.
Wait, wait, Ms. Ms. Pasternak, can you please provide your address, please?
Of course, three, four, two Hobart Avenue, Short Hills. Um, my question is, um, just back to the, um, cafe license and the, um, clarification. Can you please say again, when did you obtain a cafe license to have dining on the outdoor?
Hello, you asked me the question?
Yes, Mr. Caruso, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was, uh, that was in June two thousand, two thousand twenty.
So you had, your, your testimony is that you had permission to be outdoors with dining, outside of your cafe? Uh, your restaurant, um, in June of two thousand twenty?
Yes, I, I have the permission from my landlord when I called Mr. Jeffrey.
Okay, so your, your testimony is that your landlord gave you permission to have tables outside the restaurant?
Yeah, but also fired the, the application to the town.
And what response did you get when you filed your application to the town?
That I can operate, uh, outdoor, I think, I don't remember.
You don't remember?
No. I spoke to someone in town, that they told me that I can operate, uh, the sidewalk, but I will have to do application for this matter later on.
Okay, so, so did, let me ask you, did you have outdoor dining?
Yes.
For your restaurant? And can you describe where you put the tables for the outdoor dining?
On the sidewalk.
But just in front of your own restaurant in that space, or was it beyond that? Can you describe that?
Well, yes, it was, uh, in the front of my place, in the front of the entire place, the same building.
And not beyond that?
No.
Not, not to the, to the sidewalk, all the way to the corner? Are you certain?
Oh, you mean the old building on the right?
Well, if you're facing the restaurant, I'm talking about the sidewalk that goes to the left, all the way to the corner of, of, of Glenwood? And then all the way to the end of the park.
Yes, I'm sorry, it was one table at the end, yes.
So you, you did have tables then?
Yes.
Beyond your property, both to the left and to the right? And you're not sure whether you had permission from the town for a, uh, outdoor cafe license?
Well, I did the application, I mailed the application twice. The second time, I was approved, but I would love to do the, the application for the, for the zoning, I was told.
Are you aware that you were denied the application by, by, by the township?
No, I, I asked I'm sorry.
Why would that be that you weren't aware of that if you filed the application?
Because that was after that I do the application.
But I asked you if you were aware that you were denied, and you told me that you were not, so I'm confused. If you filed an application, wouldn't you be waiting to get an answer before you put tables outside?
Yes, I called, I called, they told me that I can, but I will have to do the application for the zoning, for the other matter.
Okay, all right, well, as I understand it, and I, I, you can correct the record, but as I understand it, you were denied the cafe license. Um, there were, there was a complaint made at a public meeting by myself and others who use that sidewalk regularly because we felt that we were in danger, having to go onto the street to walk past all the tables. And we made that complaint to the, the township business administrator and your tables and chairs were taken away after that. So I'm just puzzled as to exactly how this all transpired, that you forgot that you were denied, that I, it just, it's not adding up to me. And I would appreciate some clarification.
No, I was denied and I took the, all the table out. I was denied it this year, this April twenty-one. I was denied.
That the tables were out there past the time when you were denied?
No, they called me and I took it off of the table the same week.
Mr. Ms. Pasternak, I think you can, you can move on at this point.
Have you testify here?
Okay.
This is time for questions only.
Okay, that's fine. I, I'm just puzzled by the response. I can't put it together as a timeline in my own mind. I can't put it together as a timeline in my own mind. Um, the other question I have is, could you explain, um, how, um, how, how you are going to deal with emergency situations for your patrons? If there's a fire, if there's a situation where, um, there's an emergency like we just had with the flooding, where, where does your employee base and your, and your, um, patrons, where would they exit from? And how would you handle that situation?
From the front or from the back? I have to go.
There's, there's a way for people to exit from the back?
Yes, of course.
Are there any locked gates in the back?
Yeah, but the, that's a gate.
Is it locked?
The gentleman, no, you have to put the, uh, something that we can open, you have to change the gate. That was told by the fire department, that you have to change the, the, the lock on the gate, that that can be opened.
Mm-hmm, so it is locked, the gate is locked?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me, let me jump in here, a question, a quick question here, a question minute here. Mr. Caruso, who owns that gate?
The gentleman across the street, Enzo.
Did you call a fire department to have a summons issued if that gate is locked?
Yes, yes, they came, they came a few times.
Was a summons issued for that gate being locked?
Yes, I, I don't call the lady next door by me, she called the tile place. And it was an issue that the fire department was here, and I think that, yes. Yes, it was a summit issue to him.
We need, well, we need to verify that, because if that case is being locked, and that's a safety hazard, that owner of that property needs to be summoned.
I, I guess, I, I was asking questions, is that, do I just get interrupted, or can I continue?
You can continue, you can continue.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure how this is supposed to work, but, um, are you aware of a letter that was issued, um, this past July regarding the emergency access and, uh, the, uh, the, um, trespassing issue that, that was involved in the summons and the whole discussion with the fire department, the police? Can you, can you explain that to us?
Ms. Pasternak, you have to provide some, some form of, of foundation as to what you're talking about. Because this is, this is a public meeting, the board, many board members may have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, I, I think this, you're, okay, but you didn't ask the same of Mr. Plotner when he asked the question, so I'm basing my question off of what he just said. So maybe we should start with him, and then I'll go on from there, would that be okay?
No.
Ms. Pasternak, please ask your question.
My question was, can, can Mr., uh, the Caruso just explain further what happened after a summons was issued?
Objection, what summons?
Ben, they, they, just, those are some of the no issue to me, the issue to the gentleman who won next door. It's not me.
Was there a meeting with the fire department of Milburn and the police department, you as owner and them as owners, um, of that property next to yours?
No, that I know, it's not with me. I'm a tenant.
Okay, so you weren't party to any meeting or any discussion regarding that, okay, that's fair. But that's, that's your answer. I have no more questions, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that pays care of the questions from the audience, Eileen?
Just checking to see if there's any hands raised. I see no more hands raised.
Okay. Mr. Sukis?
I have no further witnesses, uh, in connection with this application, Mr. Steinberg.
I think you indicated previously that you would bring back a witness that you had at a prior meeting.
We do have Mr. Keller here, who is available to join us.
Does anyone on the board have a question for him? For Mr. Keller? I see no question, no hands raised.
But I do think Mr. Honey said had a question for Mr. Keller.
I think that's correct. Can we bring back Mr.?
Yeah, I'm good.
Hey, um, Joe, while we're bringing in somebody, can I, Rob, I'd like to ask our attorney a, a question that, just so I can get clear of my, my thought process, would that be okay?
Sure.
Rob?
Ask you a question.
Just help me understand, Rob, as, as I sit here as a board member, and I'm thinking about positive and negative criteria, how am I, or am I, to consider testimony related to, you know, prior events, summonses, you know, misseeds or mistakes? How do I incorporate that into my thinking and my, you know, ultimate decision-making as it relates to this case? I'm, I'm a little confused, because we're hearing a lot of information about things that happened in the past, and, um, I'm, I'd like, love to hear your thoughts on how that applies to things like positive and negative criteria.
Sure, well, we're, we're not up to, it's a good question, Steve.
We're not, we're not at that stage yet, Steve.
Well, well, let me-
I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna ask you to hold your question until we get through the testimony of these witnesses.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Honey said you've, uh, you've got Mr. Keller back here, you had a question for him.
Thank you very much. Can I proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. I just-
Questions only now.
Yes, yes, it is going to be questions. Uh, Mr. Kelly, you, you stated in your previous testimony, uh, that Baccone was a good neighbor, um, that they were courteous of residents, that it was a neighborhood restaurant, that, uh, they were very concerned about mitigating detriment to residents. I'm wondering if you could just, um, tell me, uh, how many, how many days in the five hundred days that Baccone has been operating that you were personally witness to this good behavior?
Well, first of all, I believe that that testimony actually came from our attorney in his opening um, introduction for the site. He also went over the changes that, um, uh, Mr. Caruso had made, uh, a- after hearing complaints from the neighborhood, and that, uh, he had made a number of changes. So I think the, the testimony as to his, uh, being a good neighbor actually came prior to my testimony. Uh, I have actually been at that site, uh, probably fifteen Friday and or Saturday nights uh, on your street in front of your house, actually, um, at night, just kind of walking around to see what I could hear, what I could smell, what I could see. Um, but I have, uh, I have certainly not been there the, the majority of the five hundred days that, uh, Mr. Caruso has been, um, in business.
So, so you're, you're comfortable stating that, uh, you were there fifteen out of the five hundred days? So that's enough of a sample for you to establish that he's being a good neighbor?
Yeah, and that was, those were not my, that was not my testimony.
Oh, I thought that was what you just said.
I said that was not my testimony, I have been to the site, but it was not my testimony. That was the introduction from the attorney last time, um, who said that, uh, there were a number of changes Mr. Caruso had made, uh, over the recent months after hearing complaints from the neighbors to, uh, become a better neighbor, to be aware of his neighbors. And he listed a litany of things that, a couple of things were, um, mentioned by the planner, and Mr. Steinberg correctly noted at the end that that testimony was neither appropriate for, uh, the attorney or the planner, but that was hearsay and should come from the applicant, and that's why he's testifying for tonight.
Okay, I, I apologize, I seem to remember that, uh, everybody that gave testimony pretty much stating that, uh, they were operating as good neighbor.
We've heard, we've heard Mr. Keller's response to that.
Yes, sir, I'm moving on, sir. Um, wo- would it surprise you to know that it's possible to hear noise from Baccone Restaurant uh, on the third floor of my house?
Uh, if, if the doors are open, there's noise, I, wouldn't surprise me. It wouldn't surprise me that you might hear noise coming from the, uh, the music that happens across the street on the weekends either. So I, I can't tell where that music comes from, what time it is, I was not there. So I, I'm sure that, um, you would have a better idea than I would.
And I wanted to ask you some questions about the, the, the buffer area, the setback area. Is it allowable in a Milbury Municipal Code to store, uh, chemicals and waste grease uh, in this buffer area?
The, um, the town has a, a buffer requirement that is not part of the conditional use requirements. It is, uh, a buffer that exists between residential and commercial zones. This property has never maintained that proper distance. So what we have is about thirteen point eight six to thirteen point nine three feet. As to whether, um, it's appropriate, it's really a fire department issue. Um, and, uh, I can't speak other, as to whether it's appropriate, but clearly, um, it is a screened area with a fence, although the fence could use some, some, uh, some maintenance. It is, uh, it does screen as well, there's, as well as there's some trees near. But I can't speak to whether that, uh, it's appropriate or violates any fire code. I don't know what the materials are, uh, whether they're flammable or not, I have no idea how it's locked. Um, but I would suspect that if that was an issue, either for the neighbors or for the, uh, uh, the fire department, my client would move that stuff inside.
And, and the, the, the presence of a, a, a waste grease tank in that area, uh, would, would that be needed to be noted on the, on the site plan that's submitted?
No, our survey, uh, our survey was actually, data was collected over three periods of time. We would not show temporary movable items, I wouldn't show a, a garbage can, actually, that could be moved around. I wouldn't show a grease trap that was on, we, a grease disposal was on wheels. Um, and I actually believe that when we, uh, did the base survey, um, that might have preceded the time when, um, when the applicant moved in. I had surveyed this for, uh, previous tenant, and I had surveyed this when I did an application for the corner property. So we use historic evidence, wh- when our surveyors were out there, those, uh, transient elements were not located, nor would they normally be on the survey.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, uh, a waste grease tank that is on wheels is considered, uh, temporary, but one, one that is not on wheels would be considered permanent and should be included in the site plan?
It would not be, um, it would not be a survey requirement as established by the state in New Jersey in, in the, uh, standards that are promulgated for the items that should go on to a, uh, land title survey, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I was wondering if you could detail if you know, uh, specifically what steps were taken to mitigate, uh, cooking odor and noise to residents?
That was not my testimony, and I think we've had, uh, testimony from the, uh, from Mr. Caruso today.
It just wasn't specifically clear. I was hoping you could shed a little light on that, I'm sorry, I'll move on. Uh, a- as you're aware, in, um, uh, building two oh one X, which is located five seventeen Milburn Avenue, in, uh, January of two thousand ten, uh, there was a three alarm fire, burned that building to the ground. Um, that fire was directly adjacent to five nineteen Milburn Avenue. Uh, at that time, the fire department needed to cut a hole in a section of fence behind my property in order to extinguish this fire. Um, my question is, is there an approved emergency access to five nineteen Milburn Avenue that does not involve access to, from residential property?
That's really a fire department issue and not, uh, not a surveying engineering issue. Uh, there is a, a gate, unfortunately, it does go through the adjacent property, and as to whether the fire department has the jurisdiction to keep that, um, available for egress only, I don't know. It's really not as part of the jurisdiction of this board, and it's not part of the jurisdiction, it's not part of my area of expertise to, uh, to comment on that.
Okay, thank you. Um, is, is non-emergency use of this alleyway behind the building a permitted use?
I don't know what you mean by that, do you? What do you mean, what, can you clarify the question for me?
Um, can, can that back area behind the restaurant, uh, be used and accessed for any other reasons that are not emergency in nature?
I don't know the, I don't know the answer to that. Prior zoning officials always deemed that in absence of a, of a, uh, twenty percent planted buffer, a six-foot fence would, uh, would satisfy, and that the normal business operations could go outside. That was under prior zoning officer, the current zoning official, um, uh, takes a different standard. I'm not sure what's permitted, it's really a question for the zoning officer, uh, who's also the board secretary, is what can go on back there? Um, so it's really not, uh, it's not codified as to what can go on in the back of that restaurant.
Okay, and then my, my last, uh, question is, um, you stated in your, your testimony at the last meeting that, uh, Bruce Jeffries represented five nineteen Milburn Avenue as a turnkey operation for a restaurant? And I just wanna see if you still stand by that statement?
Yeah, and that, and that I should, I should point out, that is, um, uh, somewhat hearsay evidence, because when I asked the applicant's prior attorney, Mr. Nitti, um, and then I asked Mr. Caruso, uh, they told me that it was represented to them that this was a turnkey operation. I think Mr. Caruso used that same terminology this evening as to that, uh, it was a, it was a prior restaurant, and that, uh, whether the intent was it was turnkey in that it was already fitted out as a restaurant, or the implication, certainly that, uh, Mr. Caruso, I, you can ask him, but I think he inferred from was that he did not need any special permits from the township to move in. Uh, but again, that was really testimony that was provided to me by Mr. Caruso. It was hearsay, but I think he reiterated that again this evening.
And that, so you're saying that that, that Mr. Caruso told you that Mr. Jeffries represented the restaurant as a turnkey operation?
Actually, actually, Mr. Nitti did, his prior attorney.
Mr. Nitti said that Mr. Jeffries represented the restaurant as a turnkey operation?
That is correct. I have no direct knowledge of that, of what Mr. Jeffries said, I wasn't part of that conversation.
And, and then I just have one other question. Um, on, on, um, the engineering drawings, um, there's a very specific place where you have sign-offs from, uh, fire department, public officials, zoning officer. I'm just wondering if, if you have a, if you, you notice that one of those signatures is missing, specifically if the zoning officer's signature is missing. Um, does that give you pause? Do you, do you, do you circle back and try to find out what the issue is before you press forward?
I'm sorry, would you repeat the question?
I'm saying if there's, if, if you realize that a zoning official has not signed off uh, on a project, do you reach out to the zoning official to get the necessary signatures to move on with the project?
Well, first of all, the, the signature block that's on my survey is exactly verbatim as is required in the checklist for a, uh, for an application. And it requires the, the sec, the signature of the secretary, the chairman, and the township engineer. Uh, the fire department is not included in that, nor is the zoning code official. Presumptively, um, this application, and I don't have it right in front of me, would have received a denial letter from the zoning officer. That would have been the review that set off the process to be before this board. So it's not, um, as the surveyor, uh, and engineer of record, it's not my job to verify zoning that was identified in the zoning officer's denial letter, and then the, um, the application was put together by the attorney and the planner.
So, and this is just from my own knowledge. So the, the, the only mechanism that would, that would spur this back to have somebody look at it again and reexamine it would be this denial letter?
Well, whenever you apply, unfortunately, when, start over, when you apply for a building permit, um, or for an occupancy, the normal course of affairs is it runs through the building department, and that would include the zoning officer. Unfortunately, Tilly's, as we represented last time, had gone through building permits. Uh, they were signed off, they were inspected multiple times, they made, uh, amendments to their plan, addendums, um, got COs, et cetera, uh, but was conspicuously absent in that signature block, not put on by me, but by the township building department, was that it never got routed through the bill, through the zoning officer. So Ms. David did not have the opportunity to look at it, to my understanding, and my conversation with Ms. David. So the, um, at that point, when they came in, when it was made aware to the zoning officer, uh, who's also the board secretary, that Baccone had occupied the, uh, the site, at some point, she issued a letter, a letter of denial, I'm assuming, and she can really speak to it because she's, she's here tonight, um, she issued a denial, and that settled, that set off the need for this applicant to come before the board for, uh, the use variance, the conditional use variance. Uh, it doesn't rise to the level, doesn't rise to the level of site plan, so it's just a conditional use variance. And that's why we're- And that's why we're here. So Ms. David has seen it. Now, if they come in for additional building permits, or they look to make modifications to the, anytime in the future, they make a modification, they expand the seating, they change the kitchen, they do anything, it would have to go to the building department, and presumptively, it would be routed back through zone. So it's not, there's nothing that, nothing that I needed to check on this, nor any of the applicant team. It was already decided by the zoning.
Okay, thank you very much. That was my last question.
Is there anyone in the audience now? The questions have ended. Is there anyone in the audience?
I have one more hand raised by Jeffrey Phil.
One more question? All right, let's see who it is.
It's Jeffrey Phil.
Mr. Phil, do you have one more question?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Keller, you just said that the zoning official issued a letter of denial. Is that correct?
There was no letter of denial.
Because the application says NA, that that didn't happen?
There was no letter of denial.
There was?
It was a verbal denial. There was no actual letter of denial. They submitted the application without a letter. It's not a requirement.
I'm just saying the application. You did a survey. Is there an easement on this property? To allow them to go through the gate? Right. Did the fire department, in standard of these applications, did the engineer, the township engineer, municipal planner, fire department review this application and make any recommendations?
I don't believe, I'll ask Ms. David. I don't think we had any, it's been a while since we were here the first time. I don't believe we had any review letter from those entities. It's not a site plan, it's simply a use variance application. So I don't, I don't know the answer to that, as to whether there was any independent review. I was not part of any conversation or onsite meetings with any of those entities.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else, Eileen?
No.
All right, we're going to now move to the next phase of the hearing, which is the, any statements, not questions now, statements by members of the public who would like to be heard on this matter.
All right. I have Janet Penisi. I will bring her over. Hello?
Yes.
Hi.
Ms. Penisi, you're going to have to be sworn by our attorney, please.
Why don't we have Eric do it?
Yeah, I can do it.
We can have our court reporter swear.
Okay, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, and by the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you would just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Janet Penisi, P as in Peter, E-N-N-I-S-I. I reside at forty-seven Mohawk Road in Short Hills, and I operate a business at two-two-five Milburn Avenue in Milburn.
What's the name of the business, Ms. Penisi?
I am a lawyer, and I operate a sole proprietorship.
Thank you.
Make your statement, please.
So just sir clarification, I have worked in this town for over thirty years. I have lived in this town for approximately thirty years. I have raised children that have gone through the entire school system. I'm married to someone who grew up in this town, who's been here since the fifties. So I would consider myself a good judge of what a good neighbor is. And I do have to tell you, I do think that Mr. Caruso and his restaurant are good neighbors. It's a very fine restaurant. I think I thought about it today, and I probably have been a customer at least a hundred times since he was opened. So I'm in and out of that restaurant a lot. I meet people from the town there all the time. He is attentive, he's resourceful, he likes this town, he cares about this town. He definitely is the kind of person who seems to be attentive to anything he can do to make this a better place. It's a really nice neighborhood restaurant. You know, to give him a hard time is, is really a shame, in my opinion, because this is the kind of neighborhood restaurant that we need more of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Regan.
Ms. Regan, raise your right hand, please. We're going to ask you to be sworn by Mr. Fishman.
I don't see her.
Oh.
I see a picture.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. If you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in today's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, and by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
It's Laura Regan, three forty-two Elmwood Avenue, Maplewood, New Jersey, oh seven oh four oh.
Welcome to Milburn.
I got married in Milburn. It's close to my heart. In fact, they waived the ten dollar fee for my application just to celebrate with us. So it's a very fond memory of mine. I got married at St. Stephen's. So, yeah, okay. I just wanted to state that I've known Silvio Caruso for years. We, my husband and I were loyal visitors at his restaurant in South Orange, and it broke our hearts when he lost his lease. And when he resurrected in Milburn, we were so happy because we were used to going over to Enzo's and Kun Tai before there. And we always, we spent a lot of time there. And we do the other Italian restaurants in town, Caramia and a lot. And he offered something a little bit different. And I have to say, we always take one car, sometimes two, if I'm meeting my husband after work. And we've never had an issue parking. There's always spots. Sometimes I don't want to schlep too far, but I always find a spot, even if it's a little bit further down the block. And he's just so generous and kind and, and exactly what the woman just said, who so kindly said, he's a good person, and he tries really hard. And I know if there's something that he needs to fix, he would be happy to do so. And I just wanted to say, I'm happy to spend my money in Milburn at, you know, restaurants and businesses like this. I think it's a real asset to the town.
Thank you.
Let me bring over Merrily Rice Beck.
Yeah, that lady said it good, too.
Merrily Respec, right.
Hi. Hi.
We need a picture.
Can you hear me? Let me turn my video.
There you go.
Turn your video on.
I'm trying. Start video, okay. Okay.
Just, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, and by the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Merrily Respec, ninety-one Whittingham Terrace, Milburn. I am a lifelong resident of town. I've lived here since, I've lived here for most of my life. I'm sixty-five years old, and I've lived here since nineteen fifty-eight. And I was married here at the Shauna Claire. As a teenager in the nineteen seventies, I used to frequent this address when it was the Glenwood Sweet Shop. So the estimate that it was here in the eighties, you're way off. I used to go there in the early seventies, and it was already an establishment, probably from the sixties. Note that back then, there was another restaurant on Milburn Avenue, Upper Milburn Avenue, up near New Eyes for the Needy. It backed onto Meadowbrook Road. It was called Buckstins. Served breakfast, lunch, and dinner for many years. Now it's a real estate agent. I've been a customer for Bakone for many years. Used to drive over to South Orange to enjoy his wonderful cuisine and his hospitality. We held special family parties there. And one of the residents who called in earlier made it sound like Silvio's clientele was based in South Orange. People from all over went to Bakone. Us, other people from Milburn, my sister's in Maplewood, she would go. I have a friend in South Carolina, who every time he came to town, had to go to Bakone's. I have to say, I am appalled by some of the questions from residents, some of whom are surrogates for nearby competition. And the endless questions about the timing of the cafe licenses and so forth. What's the point of rehashing this over and over again? The fact that Tilly's did not obtain price proper licensing has nothing to do with Silvio. He was led to believe the site was host to restaurants for decades. I'm appalled about the comments about the mice. When there are other restaurants in the area, nobody can tell where the mice are coming from. And I have to say, I live in South Mountain. I've had an occasional mouse over the years, and I don't live anywhere near a restaurant. Silvio explained that he's hired an exterminator, and that explanation should suffice. Silvio opened at the most difficult time in our town's memory. He pushed ahead with his plan despite the pandemic. We should be thrilled that we are able to attract such a fine establishment. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
I have three more. Jeffrey Phil, David Honeyson, and Oian Oalabi. So I'll bring, and Jean Pastor back.
I did manage to say surrogates for the restaurants and the mice thing.
Before I get sworn in, I just want to know, is this a time to give testimony? Or is this also the time that the citizens are supposed to make comments about the application?
You can do both.
Would you prefer everyone do it at this time?
No, this is your, this is your chance to shine.
I don't, I hope I do, but I don't know.
Raise your hand.
Wait, wait, do you swear from testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, whole truth, and by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the right.
Jeffrey Phil, eleven Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. I don't know where to begin. The, we, this is a zoning board application. It's not a testimonial of the applicant. It's a question of the process and compliance with the law. I am shocked that we've heard that there has been oral denials, not something in writing. We're hearing, oops, we were given representations by the landlord that turned out to be false. But the real issue comes back to, this is a restaurant that's located next to a neighborhood. No one's debating that it's a destination restaurant. The question is parking. Where will the employees park? Where will the patrons park? Question of egress. There's serious issues about if there's an emergency, there's no easement. There's been hearsay about what was said between the fire department and the new owners. What happens in a case of emergencies? We've now know there's a difference between emergency egress and ordinary egress. We've been told all ordinary ingress, that being deliveries of product, removal of garbage, usable, dealing with the waste from the oil. It's all going out the front door, not the back door. There are serious questions for this community as to what happened here that no one knew that restaurants were operating that did not comply with the law. There's a difference in other applications between a luncheonette that operates, that closes at four, and a destination restaurant that's open till later in the hours, seven days a week. We need to consider what's happened to the neighborhoods. At the last meeting, you did hear from neighbors, there are other neighbors. They're concerned about what's happening to their community. Listen to the neighbors, Mr. Honeyson. There are laws. The question is, did people comply with the law? Why this person who was operating a very successful restaurant in South Orange believed that he could come to Milburn, pay a landlord, sign a lease, believe he has a turnkey without ever thinking he had to go and get approvals? It bogs the mind. And all we hear is, my landlord, Mr. Jeffrey says it was okay. Mr. Jeffrey says I can do this. No one's seen anything in writing. Other people will testify about emails later on. This has been going on for years. We had the law. All we're asking is that you comply with the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience, Eileen?
Yes. There's five, so far, five people.
Let's bring the next one in.
Okay, I'm gonna bring in David. David Jacobs.
David Jacobs.
Amuse yourself, Mr. Jacobs.
Amuse yourself, please.
You're muted. You're muted.
Still muted.
We can't hear you. You're muted.
We can't hear you, Mr. Jacobs. Lower left-hand corner. Click the mute button so that you're unmuted.
He obviously does not have a kindergarten in the house. We can't hear you.
I, I'll just go on to someone else.
Yes, I think you'll have.
I have Jay Morielli.
Jay Morielli.
Okay, Mr. Jacobs, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, and by the truth?
I do.
Would you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Jay Morielli, one Clermont Drive, Short Hills. I'd like to start by saying I've been a resident of Short Hills for eighteen years. And when I have things done on my property, work done, I try to follow the regulations and local ordinances of Milburn Township to the best of my ability. If I have questions or don't understand the regulations, I ask before proceeding. What troubles me most about this application is that the property in question owned by Jeffrey's Realty has had not one, but two separate businesses operating in the building without appropriate township approval. Mr. Keller testified, and Mr. Caruso testified, that the landlord represented the property as a turnkey operation. I take that to mean, if I was a tenant... I take that to mean if I was a tenant, uh, moving a business in that I could move in, turn the key on the door, open and start doing business. I'm not sure, um, where Mr. Jeffries or his representatives are, um, in this process. I guess they don't need to be here to speak to what they, um, told to the business owner. But it's pretty clear that, um, uh, the information that was passed along, or what seems to be clear is that, um, Mr. Jeffries has misled, um, the tenants of this business. I'm not sure how long Mr. Jeffries has owned this building. I know that the hundred and twenty-five foot setback requirement, which requires restaurants moving in dates back to nineteen ninety-three. I assume Mr. Jeffries was aware of this ordinance. I believe that there are emails that, uh, are out there that show that he is in discussions with town officials about getting this ordinance changed. And, um, it just seems to me that it, uh, the person who, um, could clarify a lot of these issues with regard to why, uh, proper zoning approvals were not sought prior to moving two businesses, two businesses into a building that he owns, um, is not here. So my question, I guess, uh, rhetorical to the board is, um, landlords like Mr. Jeffries, um, that are moving businesses and not giving them information as to the rules and regulations and what they need to do, what can be done about this? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Eileen.
Okay, next, the David Honey, Honeyset.
Mr. Honeyset, we're gonna need you to be sworn.
Yes, sir.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give into tonight's Zoom hearing to be truthful, truth, known by the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, David Honeyset, ninety-two Meadow Brook Road, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Uh, I have a, a short, uh, PowerPoint that I would like to share if I could, and then I have a statement afterwards.
So with regard to the PowerPoint, um, Mr. Honeyset, did you submit that to Ms. Davit in advance?
I did. I submitted it today at about, uh, four thirty PM, I believe. I sent her an email this morning and she said, as long as I should just submit it before the meeting. So she had it for the records.
Do you, um, Eileen?
I have, I, it must have been after we had shut down. So I have not seen it now.
Is, is Mr. Honeyset, um, able to screen share, Eileen?
Yes, he should be able to, if he has.
So what we're gonna do before you screen share, Mr. Honeyset.
Yes.
Whatever you're gonna be presenting, that you need to, uh, make sure that Ms. Davit by tomorrow morning has a copy of it.
Okay.
Confirm that.
Yeah, she should already have, she should already have a copy of it.
I'd like you to confirm that in the morning, please, regardless of the outcome of this application. And then also, um, as you're gonna screen share, um, we're, how many pages is this PowerPoint?
I believe it's seven.
Okay. I think what we will do, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, is this, this would be considered oh-one for identification. The proffer is that consists of seven pages and we'll let Mr. Honeyset take it from there.
That's fine. Oh, one. Mr. Honeyset, proceed.
Okay, so the, the, the first page, uh, is just the, uh, the health license that was issued by Milburn, uh, and that was, uh, four, four-four, two thousand twenty. I just wanted to put that in the record and also that, uh, Bacconie Restaurant has been operating there for five hundred and thirty-two days, according to this license or this permit without the required variance approvals. I just wanted to make note of that. The second page, um, is the first, the left side of the second page, uh, is the rider that was originally filed for Bacconie, South, uh, which basically states that, uh, the use variance, um, from the previous applicant was completely satisfied and that basically that Tilly's had operated, um, under municipal law, according to the code. The second page, or second side of that page just depicts the site plan for five nineteen Milburn Avenue and just basically you can see that there are no amendments to the, to that back area of the site plan. There's only an HVAC unit. And then it says paved area. So there's no depiction of anything else in that site area, even though there are other items being stored there. The next slide is a violation that was issued to Bacconie South for, uh, excess debris, which is in that buffer area. I believe the date is, uh, eight thirteen, twenty twenty. The next page is, uh, reported police incidences that were at Bacconie. There are actually four between, uh, three twenty-eight and six. I can't see the other date because of screen chairs over it. So it was, uh, Mr. Caruso stated that the police had responded one time to Bacconie Restaurant. It was actually, uh, four. And there was actually two, two complaints that were not on there that were called into the police department for some reason. The next slide is a photo of the exhaust fan for Bacconie Restaurant, which has the, uh, the odor and noise mitigation device that, uh, Mr. Caruso and Mr. Keller spoke about, which is simply a sheet metal frame that goes around the fan. Doesn't seem like it's very high tech in terms of what it's, um, preventing in terms of odors reaching resins. Um, and then the, uh, next slide is, uh, photos of the, the buffer area specifically directly behind five nineteen Milburn Avenue that showed the rear door of the kitchen on six nineteen, two thousand twenty-one at ten twenty-two PM, wide open while the restaurant was operating. The second photo is, uh, mops and brooms and other cleaning items which are left in the buffer area. The third photo, the unsecured chemical cabinet is the chemical cabinet that Mr. Caruso referred to as always locked in the buffer area. Um, the next slide is, uh, this is a panoramic photo of the rear garden of my house. So it abuts five nineteen Milburn Avenue. You can see there is some mature green uh, buffer, uh, the stockade fence, and then there's no buffer at all. You can see the white back of the building clearly. And there is a, uh, small or a short rather, uh, video with sound that was recorded from, uh, the, my garden to illustrate the, um, sound that is audible in the garden, which I would like to play for you. Uh, the next slide is.
Wait, 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 hold on a second. Mr. Honeyset, with regard to that sound recording, did you take that sound recording yourself?
I did.
And when was that taken?
Uh, I can tell you specifically, it was in June. I can give you the exact, uh, date if you just give me one second.
I'm gonna object to that sound recording, Mr. Simon, Mr. Steinberg.
I'm going to rule that the sound recording is irrelevant and should be ignored by the board.
Okay, can I ask as to why?
Because it doesn't really prove anything. I don't know whether, how much of it is the scraping of electronic, uh, equipment and how much of it is actual noise that was recorded.
Well, it's a, it's a video that was taken from my iPhone and attached here. It's not, there's been no modification to this video whatsoever. It's a clear representation of what I experience in, in the garden behind my house.
We don't know where that sound's coming from.
Yeah, that's number two. All right, let's move on.
Okay, the next slide is, uh, on the right side is the representation from Mr. Jeffries that Tilly's, that five, sorry, five nineteen Milburn Avenue is a turnkey restaurant with sidewalk seating clearly visible in front of it. And then on the left side is from seven thirty, two thousand twenty-one at eight or nine PM in front of Bacconie Restaurant with customers seated and eating dinner.
Uh, you said you had a statement you had wanted to make as well.
Yes, which I have two more slides and then I have a statement.
Okay, wait, wait. Before, before we can, I'm sorry, Mr. Steinberg. Mr. Honeyset, you stated at the beginning that your, your oh-one PowerPoint was consisting of seven pages.
I said, I thought it was seven pages, yes.
Yeah, it seems to me on my count that we're up to page nine.
Okay, I think you have maybe two more pages maximum.
All right, just, just keep going.
The left photo is a photo of Glenwood Drive, uh, June twentieth, five fifty-nine PM with people parking in that space. The right photo is, uh, employees of Mr. Caruso parking in the back alley of, uh, Glenwood Drive.
Objection.
How do you know that his employees?
Uh, because they were parking there every day for months until the partitions were put up so they could no longer park there. I, excuse me?
I said, I repeat my objection on behalf of Bacconie South to that statement.
Uh, Mr. Sukas, by the way, you're gonna have an opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Honeyset. So you should, you so choose.
Um, the next slide is photos of Campbell Road, people parking on the side of Campbell Road, which I stated before is permitted, but just showing that they do park on the residential streets. Uh, the next photo in the center is after partitions were put up on Glenwood Drive, so people could no longer park there. People were parallel parking, uh, partway into the road because they were, I evidently could not find parking.
Same objection.
Or the parking was easier. The, the next photo is, uh, two cars parked on Meadow Brook Road. I can't really verify the reasons why. And then the next couple of photos are just general conditions around this B-three zone of how things are being taken care of. Demolition from the Lobster Shack. The next photo over is the juice bar that went in and I believe that they were stopped because they did not have permits to do the work. Uh, another photo of demolition at Lobster Shack. Uh, the Bagel Pantry sign, which is visible from my third floor window, which was on at eleven oh-seven PM at night and does not get shut off except occasionally, even though I've complained about it numerous times, including to Deputy Mayor Wasserman. Photos of how the garbage is being maintained behind Lobster Shack. Another photo of debris behind Lobster Shack. Uh, the center is a video of employees of Lobster Shack washing their dumpster out on an adjacent property. And then the refuse from that, washing out of the dumpster, which is washing down behind other businesses, behind Lobster Shack. And that is, uh, the end of the PowerPoint.
You said you had a short statement you wanted to make.
Yes, I have a statement. I just want to say that I've been a resident of.
Can you, can you stop screen sharing, please? Thank you.
Right about that.
Yep.
So can I proceed?
Please.
Okay. I've been a resident of, uh, short years. Uh, I act to being.
Wait, 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 you're not, you're, we're losing you. Hold on. We're losing you.
Start again.
Uh, I said that I'm a, I'm a resident, I've been a resident of Short Hills for fourteen years. Um, I eject, object to saying that I'm.
I'm not, I'm not.
Mr. Honeyset, Mr. Honeyset, you're, you're breaking, Mr. Honeyset, please stop.
Honeyset.
You, you're breaking up. We're not, we're not getting your words. So.
Try one more time.
Okay. So as I said, I've been a resident of Short Hills for fourteen years, residing in ninety-two Meadow Brook Road. I, I object to testimony from other residents, uh, saying that I could possibly be a surrogate for another business. I'm not a surrogate for another business. I'm solely interested in mitigating the detriment to my residency here and my quality of life, which is generally impacted by the, these businesses that are directly behind me when they're not being maintained in a proper way. Uh, I'm opposed to Bacconie South receiving approval for these variances for all the aforementioned reasons. The fact that Bacconie South did not seek this variance prior to opening should give all on this board pause. The fact that Tilly's did not have the necessary approvals is not a logical reason to approve these variances, thereby rewarding bad behavior. I know a lot of time has been spent to assure commercial property owners that we hear their concerns. Can you please hear the concerns of the residents this application most substantially impacts? The existing setbacks create many impactful detriments. Odor, noise and rodents were the most alarming issue raised as one of safety. Potential fires and emergency access to mitigate those events should be a paramount concern to all residents, fire department, emergency services, business owners and township government. These problems must be solved before anyone should or would feel comfortable with this variance approval. Would it surprise board members to hear that the police were called on numerous occasions for noise complaints at Bacconie Restaurant, often after ten PM? On one occasion, it was Silvio Caruso himself, who was making noise and talking very loudly from the buffer area. When my wife asked him to be quiet from the third floor window, his response was, oh, hi honey with a laugh. I went at this time behind the restaurant to confront Mr. Caruso about his behavior. Are you aware that Bacconie South had their outside seating closed down because they had never filed for a permit? That Bacconie South continues to seat people outside without having a permit? That alcohol was seen being consumed on Milburn Avenue in an unpermitted space in front of Bacconie Restaurant? Does this not create liability for the township, for the operator, for the residents? Mr. Sukas, Mr. Keller and Mr. Barry all refer to Bacconie South as a neighborhood establishment that is respectful of neighbors. Will this behavior I witnessed and experienced be considered neighborly? Mr. Barry also mentions detriment is both reasonable and substantial as it applies to residents. Would you consider a possible fire as a substantial detriment that you would want residents to absorb? Are you according, where according to the fire marshal that five nineteen Milburn Avenue does not have a required emergency access to the buffer area?
Objection.
Are you aware restaurants create a substantially higher fire risk than retail stores? As a resident impacted by fire, I was at ninety-two Meadow Brook Road when five seventeen Milburn Avenue. As a resident impacted by fire, I was at ninety-two Meadowbrook Road when five seventeen Milburn Avenue burned to the ground. Much of that fire was battled from my backyard where a stockade fence was cut down by the fire department, which I later paid to repair at my own expense. In your opinion, are these reasonable detriments to which residents should have exposure? The existing conditions specific to this area of the B three zone create unreasonable hardships which will exacerbate, be exacerbated by allowing conditional use to this restaurant. I have been in the restaurant business for over thirty years myself. The lack of adequate waste areas, emergency access, and appropriate noise insulating buffer areas specific to this area will not disappear over time. I never once had an issue with the Glenwood Cafe. It closed daily at four P M. Not once can I recall it preventing me from enjoying the property for which I pay considerable tax dollars. I did not receive a notification of Tilly's opening. If I had been aware, the business was operating illegally, I would have raised concerns. Uh, the consistent slamming of the back door and the sound of glass bottles being dropped into trash receptacles was a detriment to my enjoyment of the garden area, especially in the warmer days and months of the year while Tilly's was operating. Are these the issues you, you would appreciate if this was in your backyard? Why did the appointed town officials allow this and continued violations we just proposed to endure? The township currently offers no specific quantifiable enforcement criteria for odor, waste, or noise violations. Enforcement is based almost entirely on opinion. If you expect residents to support restaurants in their backyard, we must be secure that the township will protect our quality of life and mitigate the detriments. Again, I oppose approval of these variances. I thank you for your time and consideration, and I regret this testimony being entered into evidence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, is there anyone else?
There are three more. I'm gonna bring Mr. Jacobs back because I see him back here, so I'm gonna bring him back hopefully.
Um, wait, before we uh, we leave, Mr. Honey said, I made a comment earlier that I want to stick to, which is that Mr. Sukas, because Mr. Honey said actually presented evidence, you have the opportunity, should you wish to do so, to cross-examine him.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. I do just have a few questions. Mr. Honey said, you testified that you have lived at Meadowbrook um road for fourteen years. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And during that time, um, Tilly's restaurant operated behind your house, correct?
That is correct, as I testified.
And the Glenwood Cafe as well operated behind your house, correct?
Yes, for a few years.
So you're no stranger to that particular parcel being operated as a restaurant for the duration of your uh residency in Short Hills, correct?
Um, no, uh, but specifically when the house was sold to me, I was aware of.
It's a yes or no question.
So yes, I have been aware of a restaurant being in that area.
And your testimony is that you were not aware that Tilly's was operating without a conditional use permit, um, correct?
My testimony was that if, if I had been aware that they were operating without the proper variances, I would have raised concerns.
Okay, so by inference, you were not aware that they were operating without a conditional use permit, correct?
Yes, because I never received notification of them opening.
Mr. Simon, I have no further questions at this time. I do object to exhibit O one. I believe that what O one does is turn in, turn this hearing into an airing of general municipal grievances. It didn't, it does not prevent um objections from a proper land use perspective with proper land use criteria. It attempts to have this board infer improper conduct on the part of Bakoni South when in fact it has no evidence of such. It simply consists of random photographs that have no real connection to Bakoni. As a matter of fact, some of those photographs portray the empty spaces on Milburn Avenue across from the Bakoni site and deal with the Lobster Shack, which is not Bakoni South. That is a separate entity in and of itself. I have nothing further at this time with respect to Mr. Honey said.
Mr. Jacobs, we're your back because we could not hear you before.
Thank you.
You need to be sworn and give your name and address.
Do you swear, do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, come by the truth?
Yes, sir.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dr. David Jacobs. I live at forty-seven Mohawk Road, Short Hills, New Jersey, and I've lived in this town close to seventy years.
Proceed.
Okay, thank you. As a lifelong member of this town, I believe that the purpose.
Wait, wait, can, I'm sorry, Mr. Jacobs, I apologize. If you're giving testimony, you have to be on camera.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
You're back.
Okay, sorry. I'm a lifelong member of this town. I have gone through the elementary school system all the way through the present time. I've always believed that the purpose of this, of a zoning board was to find out if something was a benefit to the community, not to hash out uh the other issues that are not related, such as problems in the way uh licenses or permits are provided. This restaurant has provided a positive purpose to this town. It provides friendly atmosphere, lovely service, delicious food, and are accommodating to a fault. As to the, for those people that live in the neighborhood, they too, like they are saying, or accusing or suggesting that Mr. Bak, uh, Mr. Bakone should have done more due diligence, so should they. They knew that this, that that street had restaurants and other businesses, no different than saying that Saint Rose should not chime their church bells on Sunday because it's noisy, no different than when they have a party on July fourth and they make a lot of noise or a graduation party at eleven o'clock at night, they should stop. With the town does have ordinances in regard to noise, they have ordinance in regard to parking. If we all pay taxes to have our garbage and recycles removed, he too pays taxes. So if the people want to look at their neighbors, they should welcome new people and enjoy what this man has to offer our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Right.
I have two more.
Two more.
Oh, oh, in Oval Lobby.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
You have to be sworn first.
We need to see you.
You have to get on camera.
I'm right here.
Okay, just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, come by the truth?
Yes, sir.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, yeah, will I be forty-six Maple Street, Milburn, New Jersey. So, um, I would first like to um go back to a comment that was said a couple of um comments ago regarding being surrogate for another restaurant. Um, when I spoke earlier, I spoke on behalf of residents on Meadowbrook Road. I know a couple of the residents that live on Meadowbrook Road, and I know that this is greatly going to impact them. No one is speaking on behalf of any other business but for the residents, and I will hope that the residents' voice will be heard tonight very strongly. I really feel for Bakoni Restaurant, uh, because we do want restaurants, we want businesses in our town. But the, with, with um, what um, the, 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 the last speaker, um, I, I, I didn't catch his name um, mentioned regarding him living in town for over seventy years and you can't stop a, a church bell from chiming. The church has been there for a long time. Bakone came to meet the residents where they are. And I, and I, and I, and I will hope that all the, you know, laws of the land is followed. Um, if he doesn't open there, he's welcome to open his restaurant any other place. Uh, but to inconvenience your taxpaying residents is just very, I, I feel is very insensitive. And you've heard a lot of the testimonials tonight regarding seeing rats. I don't think any one of us would like rats in our house, in our kitchen, in our backyard. Um, these residents have young children. Um, you know, it's, it's a safety concern. If any of you drive around town at night, um, you will see a bunch of rats running around Short Hills. Um, you, you, you need to, you need to go around to have a look, and I'm just, I'm a bit more concerned about his recycles. Um, you know, being put out the night before, he doesn't open up his restaurant again until five P M. And you guys heard me earlier when I asked him a couple of questions regarding if the recycle did not work the next day, how was he going to pick up his recycles? Are we willing to put up with that in Short Hills? Um, you know, leaving a recycle out for X amount of hours if it doesn't get picked up? Those are basic questions, and I think, you know, no one would like to be impacted with the high tax that we already pay in our town. So I would like it to be on the record that no one is any surrogate for anyone. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and on behalf of friends that I know on Meadowbrook Road, and I would like them to be considered first. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else, Eileen?
Jean Pasternak.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, come by the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Jean Pasternak, three, four, two, Hobart Avenue, Short Hills. I've been a resident of the Glenwood section of Short Hills for twenty-five years, almost. I've been active and engaged in this community for twenty-five years, and I'm here because I'm concerned. I'm concerned about how the process works in our town, the fairness to all the business owners and residents in terms of following our municipal laws and our local um ordinances. It's not fair that some must follow them and others don't, and I'm sorry, I just don't um adhere to the theory that someone coming into this town with many years of business as a restaurateur would be that naive to not know that there were variances required. I'd like to object to the application. The applicant, the landlord, and the landlord's real estate agent, as testified, I think throughout this, this, this evening, violated the Milburn zoning ordinances by coming in here without doing the proper process. Township employees and officials didn't do their jobs in enforcing our land use laws. Bakone's um various experts did make a claim that he has been a good neighbor as a restaurateur. I would like to object to that as someone who frequently is in that area because of where I live and where I tend to go, and I have witnessed things for many months now that concern me a great deal. I have prepared a timeline that I think will help explain my concerns better, and I'd be happy to share that shortly. Uh, I also have um Oprahd through that process, several emails from Bruce Jeffrey uh dating back to two thousand seventeen, but more um in nineteen and twenty. I also have those available, and I have submitted all of this to Eileen um actually several months ago when this, this first came up and as recently as today, the complete package. I believe that these emails demonstrate that the landlord applied pressure to the township to act in his favor. He asked the township to put aside existing ordinances governing B two, B three, and B four zones to enable Bakone to open without approvals while expecting the township committee to amend the restaurant ordinance in August of two thousand twenty.
Objection, this is hearsay testimony that um.
He stated that his tenant.
Is irrelevant.
He stated that his tenant did not need to make an application. In any case, if the ordinance was amended, he would save costs by not needing an attorney to present a case to the zoning board, and I have the emails that I can quote and show you that state that exactly.
Okay, so wait, wait, can you, I'm sorry, Ms. Pasternak.
Sure.
Um, if you're, if you're going to, you have the right to rely on, on exhibits, but if you're going to do that, um, just so we have a complete record, um, if you want to introduce those and make them part of the record, we should do so formally as part of this public hearing.
Yes, okay, that's fine.
So, so.
I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know how to do these things.
You don't have to be, you do not have to be. That's what we're here for. So if you can, um, I, Eileen, do you want Ms. Pasternak to screen share? Do you want to, if you have the documents?
I can try. Let me try.
Documents.
I can give it.
I don't have access to my work files.
Let, let me give it a, a try. Um, I have a helper here ready to go in case I can't figure out how to do it. Um, okay, so it's just, now where do I find that document? Do I have to do share? Okay. The screenshot right here. Okay, so. Just trying. Hmm, well, it looks like I don't know how to do it on this laptop. I could do it on my P C, but you can't hear me on that, so. Um, ah, I don't know how to, what else to do. I'm just not sure.
What, why, why don't you, if you're, if you're unable to screen share, why don't you at least continue with your uh statement, please?
Okay. I'm sorry. Let's see, let's just go back to share since it's not. Right here. It's not, it's not working. Okay, let's just kill it.
Okay, please continue.
Yeah, I'm trying, sorry. Okay, um, all right, I'll just continue. I can quote from them, and I did submit the documents, so uh they are there. They were Oprahd uh many months ago, and I did share them with Eileen those months ago, so I think they might have been distributed to the, the, the um zoning board members, but I'm, I can't speak for, for Eileen. Um, so um, the, the, the township business administrator eventually told um the, the applicant that he was wrong, that he did need uh to go before the, the zoning board, and um and that's why we're here this evening. So, um, there was, there is a document contained in here that does show the cafe license denial. That happened in June of two thousand twenty. Uh, it appeared from what, what I could see and what I was uh given through Oprah that there was a conflict between the zoning officer who denied the license and the township officials who um uh indicated that, that tables could be put outside. Uh, I also refer to Oprah obtained uh communications starting in um August twenty twenty from attorney Lisa Repert, who represented her mother, um, who was the homeowner uh who has since sold her home after living there for sixty years, adjacent to five nineteen Milburn Avenue. Uh, she came before the township committee that month with her concerns about the lack of adherence to the township's zoning laws by Bakoni South. She wrote letters and emails on the matter to township officials and the attorney. She pointed out that Bakoni was operating illegally and quote, must be shut down, unquote.
Objection, hearsay.
It's not, it's in, it's in a letter.
Not here.
There's a written letter where she's.
Mr. City, Mr. City.
From her October twenty-second, twenty twenty email to Christopher Falcon, township attorney, she wrote, I quote, "There is no grandfather transaction here. There were two completely new and separate businesses that opened at five nineteen Milburn Avenue. The Glenwood Luncheonette was permitted to serve breakfast and lunch only and closed every day typically by five P M. There was no successive business. In fact, there were gaps after both Glenwood and Glenwood Diner and Tilly's. Tilly's never applied for conditional use in violation of the law. The use changed substantially. Bakoni South is not grandfathered for an illegal usage, nor is it a successive owner-operator." And in um her May fourth, twenty twenty-one letter, she laid out her legal analysis in response to the township attorney's seemingly different view on things. Her client, uh, which is her mother, sold her home due to the negative consequences to her quality of life uh having the restaurant in her backyard. She and her attorney concluded that the township officials were not listening and did not care to listen to residents, including the business administrator, zoning enforcement, township committee members on the zoning board. Ms. Repert cites that there were no proper steps taken before this amended ordinance two, five, seven, seven dash.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Pasternak, that, 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 you know, you know, was not relevant to this proceeding. We, this is a variance application.
That's fine.
The applicant has a burden of proof. Please focus on those issues.
Um, in April, um, I myself called the health department. Um, in April, um, I myself called the Health Department. Uh, to confirm that the Pony's restaurant was issued a food establishment license by the Millburn Board of Health. And, and they did say it was in April, two thousand twenty, expiring in December of two thousand twenty. At their April Board of Health meeting, public meeting, I asked Mr. Anello how this occurred when zoning approvals had not been obtained. He stated that his department issued the paperwork for the food license and passed that along to the building department. I requested via Oprah after that meeting to Ms. Davit for any permits, resolutions, or cafe licenses. And she confirmed that none were issued to the Pony South. The fact is that the Pony's food establishment license was issued without the township's appropriate approvals. Under existing laws at that time, the Pony should have never been allowed to open or should have been shuttered. There was no enforcement or action taken by the business administrator.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Pasternak, I'm sorry to keep interrupting you.
Okay.
This is a board, this is a board of adjustment, and we, we have to review this application. Based on a burden of proof, and you need to address those issues, please.
Yeah, okay. Well, you, you can tell me what I'm, what I'm not allowed to say because I.
Are you reading from a letter that somebody else wrote?
I had all of that in my presentation, the actual letters, emails, everything's there.
Are you reading from some, from a letter that somebody else wrote?
Yes, in some instances, yes, I am, I'm quoting.
Do not do that, please.
Okay, do not quote from the letter.
Do not do that.
Okay. Um, there was no enforcement or action, um. Okay.
Please focus on the application before us.
Um, okay. Um. Difficult when I can't show you what I want to be able to show you. Um. I'm looking through the timeline that I wrote, and um. I mean, most of this is quotations from emails, and, and you're telling me I can't give you that because you haven't seen them. Or I can't enter them as evidence because I can't show my screen. Is that correct?
Well, partly, and partly you can't quote other people. That's here is called hearsay.
But even if I was able to show you, and I have submitted that to um this, this board months ago. The Oprahd emails that I'm quoting from, is that still not allowed?
From whom? Emails from whom?
Uh, the emails were from um to and from Bruce Jeffrey to township officials. Business administrator, mayor, et cetera.
It, it missed.
Focus on the three variances that are being sought tonight.
Hmm, okay. Well, I, I feel confused about what I'm supposed to or not supposed to talk about. So I'm just gonna try and take a minute to think, and then I'll, I'll keep going. Um. One thing I will be able to talk about, I think, that has to do with the application is that. Um, there's an issue about being a good neighbor, and I did uh take it upon myself to submit a video of. Um, a walk I took in front of that block all the way down from um the corner to Glenwood Street. Uh, Glenwood Drive, whatever it's called, and there were tables all over that whole section as we described earlier. Um, I literally had to walk into the street. I, I was very nervous about doing it because there's a lot of traffic and nighttime, dark, et cetera. Dusk it was, in fact, and um I'd later found out that there was no permission for those tables to be there. Nor those patrons to be um beyond the, any, any of that area. So uh as soon as I submitted that video to the business administrator, within the next day or two, those tables were taken away. So I just don't think it's up to the residents and their safety to have to worry about and uh do the job of our zoning officers. And I also don't think that it's um something that we can trust when someone says they're a good neighbor and then you see with your own eyes. Um, that they took total advantage of the situation of coming in here, not having enough tables, obviously. Otherwise, they wouldn't be putting things outside illegally. And I feel that that brings a level of distrust from the community, some community members, obviously some don't care. But I feel that um I, uh, if, if, if business owners here are asked to follow rules, then it should be consistent. And everyone should have to follow the same rules, and it shouldn't apply to some and not to others. That's wrong. Uh, and I object to that as a taxpayer and a long-term resident here, and someone who does follow the rules. Um. As far as parking, uh, I had some photographs that I took myself. Uh, and I think Silvio actually said that he feeds the parking meters for himself and his employees. Uh, I have had much more difficulty parking in that area. Uh, those employees do not have parking permits. I think Mr. Um, Silvio does not have a parking permit himself. His uh red van is out there all the time whenever I dine. Um, across the street at the bagel place or down the street or lobster, wherever I am, I, I see the red van. I see the door, a jar, uh garbage in there hanging out. And I don't think that that's what we would expect of a restaurant operating in Short Hills. Uh, I also had some pictures of what I saw from the back of the building. Um, there was um uh that oil tank or whatever that is, the thing that contains the oil waste, very visible. There was all kinds of garbage from shirts to um papers to uh, you know, cleaning products, et cetera. In those pictures, so I don't know whether things have been tightened up or not, but that was how I found it in the pictures that I took. Uh, on a several occasions over the last few months. And then finally, um, I, I would like to talk about, you know, this, this, um. I think it was described as a high-tech exhaust system. I mean, there was a picture, I think, already shown. I know when I'm sitting in that area, when I'm out there having a bagel and coffee sometimes, or when I'm um, you know, just walking around. I don't smell those smells during the day, but I definitely do in the evening, and um they are strong smells. You can smell oil, you can smell garlic, you can smell different things. So that exhaust system must not be operating as high-tech as, as what was uh suggested. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else, Eileen?
I see no other hands raised.
Okay, now I'm gonna give Mr. Sukis an opportunity to uh speak on behalf. Sum up on behalf of his client, but I want to point out to you, Mr. Sukis, that it is ten forty-two. That's eighteen minutes before eleven o'clock. This board ceases to do business at eleven o'clock. So I'm gonna ask you to be very brief and to just hit the high points, please.
I'm keenly aware, Mr. Steinberg, thank you very much, and I will be brief. Uh, thank you, board members, for your patience, for your attention, and for uh for sitting here and hearing everything that Silvio. Has caught, brought to bear, his witnesses, the public, et cetera. We're requesting that a conditional use permit be issued, permitting the Pony South to continue to operate. We're also requesting a variance from the one hundred twenty-five foot setback requirement, a parking variance for sixteen spaces. Based on occupancy of forty-eight and a variance regarding uh loading space where one is required, but the zero are existing. Um, we provided significant expert witness testimony, Rich, Rich Keller testified as an engineer. Regarding this application, John Barry testified at length regarding the planning, the planning of this, um, the planning aspects of this application. We submit that their testimony together, without getting into significant detail, they testified at length. Satisfies both whatever the positive, negative criteria involves here. Sylvia, uh, Silvio Caruso, the proprietor, testified. I think from Mr. Caruso's testimony, it's evident that he wants to be here. He is happy to be here. He came here um and was unfortunately hit right at the time of, of, of the pandemic. Not an easy time at all, but it's very, his desire to be here and his desire to do the right thing is obvious. Unfortunately, the, the hearing ended up um involving a lot of airing of public grievances, which I respectfully submit. Do not pertain to the land use criteria that this board is to utilize when considering Mr. Caruso's application. Uh, notably, there's, there's been very general comments about aromas in the area and, and. Uh, smells that are, are heightened in the evening, et cetera. Um, I said, I presume that I don't have to remind this board, there has been testimony today, this is not the only restaurant in this area. There's, there are, I believe the testimony was another four restaurants in this area. There's a restaurant directly ac- across the street from this restaurant. Um, where uh live music is played, et cetera. Um, odors are, are nothing new for restaurants. I think Mr. Caruso here has shown. That he is acknowledging those issues that are endemic to restaurants and is taking steps to make it better. For the area in which he is located. I think that's very important, and I, and I ask that the board consider it in its determination. So for um, for all the reasons that we've provided, for all the testimony provided in favor of Mr. Uh, Caruso's application, the Pony South's application, we respectfully request. That this board approve the application in its entirety, and thank you again, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Counsel, I'm gonna ask you uh whether, in your view, the first variance that is required. Is one of those variances known. Uh, customarily as a use variance and retired requires five affirmative votes.
Um, Mr. Steinberg, I do believe this, this application, uh, at least the, the first variance they're referring to requires five affirmative votes, yes.
Fine, I agree. All right, board members, I'm gonna turn this over to the board to discuss with the uh. Uh, understanding that uh despite my comment a minute ago, that there's only fourteen minutes left. Before eleven o'clock, we need to really pay attention to what, what our job is here. And there've been three variances sought by this applicant, the big one. When it requires five affirmative votes out of seven voting members. Is the purported violation of the ordinance. That requires a hundred and twenty-five feet from uh a restaurant. Of any sort to a residential property. Here, as I recall the testimony, is about fifteen feet. Uh, I actually, I, I think from the uh back of the. Uh, passageway, let's call it, behind the building, from a residential area. I think there is zero feet, but from the restaurant itself is probably fifteen feet. In any event, what do you people, I have very strong views about this case. But I wanna ask first what the board members, how the board members feel. So, anyone who would like to discuss this matter?
I, I had asked a question of our attorney earlier that you, you thought would be better addressed now. Would it be okay if you addressed that now?
Absolutely.
Yes, Steve, so if you can just quickly repeat the question.
Well, you know, we heard a lot of uh testimony and opinions about events that, you know, seemingly. Um, violated or potentially violated some rules and regs, and I just wanna understand how we should consider that.
I, I can't hear him.
Steve, repeat the last part, you, you um. You faded out there.
Yeah, I'd like to uh understand how we should weigh testimony uh pertaining to positive and negative. Criteria about prior events that have transpired surrounding uh this application.
So, wi- with regard to the, the prior events, and there was a, a bunch of testimony uh and references to that. By some of the applicant's witnesses, certainly members of the public. And those issues and those facts, in my mind, go to the issue of witness credibility. You are here for one reason, not to judge where somebody violated a particular ordinance. Or didn't file something within a timeframe where they're supposed to be filing it. This is an application for a conditional use variance, as you know, it's D three variance, it requires five affirmative votes. Just positive, negative criteria that Mr. Barry uh touched on in terms of the uh, the criteria that's, that's required. For the, the conditional use variance, there's also a parking variance, and then a variance for not having a loading zone. Based on what you heard as to the historical issues, you can judge that in terms of assessing witness credibility. Whether you think that Mr. Caruso's factual testimony is credible, not credible, somewhat credible. You can take into consideration certainly, to the extent that other evidence was presented as to prior. Acts or prior representations, whether that's consistent or inconsistent. And you can judge a witness's credibility uh based on some of that information to the extent that you believe. That enough information has been presented to, to demonstrate that in and of itself, that information is credible. So that's what it goes to. It doesn't go to um whether the, the positive criteria is met or the negative criteria is met. In the, in this case, you know, the positive criteria i- is about whether the site remains appropriate. For the conditional use despite the failure to conform with the setback requirement that's been discussed a number of times now. It doesn't require that the site must be demonstrated to be particularly suitable for the use. As in the case for a uh, a D one variance, and that's because the use is permitted, albeit conditionally. And it's the conditions attached to the use from which the deviations are sought. And then, in, in addition, of course, you mu- the applicant must have demonstrated uh criteria. For the negative criteria, both prongs, no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, and no uh substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance. But that's up, up to the board to assess based on the proof submitted by the applicant, as well as the information provided by the public.
Well, may I ask one follow-up question?
Sure.
Um, so, so things like fire safety, do we say that is the role of the fire department? To make sure that that is adhered to properly, or do we consider that in some other way?
I think with regard to fire safety, that you can assess it as part of. For example, if the applicant um had made accommodations to provide adequate. Fire safety based on the record, and you determine that, that could go into your assessment of the positive criteria. Um, if you determine that there's a potentially dangerous circumstance. I believe that that could also go to the negative criteria in terms of uh substantial detriment. But just based on the proofs that are demonstrated, understanding that the applicant has the burden of proof.
Okay.
Board members, who would like to speak on this matter? Amy, do I see your hand up?
Uh, you, you do not.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's what I did.
Yeah, I'll speak.
Go ahead, Joy.
Um, I, I can support this application for the following reasons. Um, I believe that the use is beneficial to the public good. It's detrimental to a few, but in considering the public, all-town residents, I think it's extremely beneficial. I think our downtown, including Upper Millburn, has been in desperate need of businesses for years. Brick and mortar has been fading for years. Um, the pandemic, in no way did that help, and the recent flooding has also been extremely detrimental to the town. And the fact that we have a good, a business that is willing to be in Millburn, I think is, is a real positive. For the public good. I don't believe that um the use. And then it is not, I don't believe that it's, it's not substantially, I, it's not substantially detrimental to the public good. Or is it um detrimental to the purpose of the zone plan? I understand that it negatively affects um particularly a few neighbors, and I, I feel that's. Obviously, I don't feel good about that, but that was, I feel like when you buy a house behind a retail, I think that is kind of a. I feel like when you buy a house behind a retail, I think that is kind of a situation that, that could happen, and people have to be aware of that. But I feel like it's our responsibility not to look at the entire history of what person, what, you know, how the process worked or didn't work. But just to consider this particular application, and I think that they, that I think it would, it's, it's a good use for the site in the end, and for the public. And what I mean by the public is all of the township.
Thank you. Craig.
So, since everyone is stating their tenure in town, I figure I'll start with that, too. I've lived here forty-nine of the forty-nine years I've been alive. I'm a third generation resident, so as of two thousand twenty-one, my family's lived in this town or around, in town for about a hundred years. So we go way back, and I think that that area is uniquely qualified to be a sort of restaurant row in our town. And as far back as I can remember, which is a long time, it's always been some sort of food service business. From various restaurants, luncheonettes, candy stores, to restaurants, as it's been, it lasted a couple iterations. And as pertaining to the first two variances, the, the loading dock and parking, well, I think that's, that's something that is somewhat common in our town and by no means is a detriment. As for the, the D variance, so these variants, as I mentioned, it is a uniquely qualified area for restaurants. We have several of them there and, and it brings some action to that area. I never have an issue parking there as, as a resident going to dine in all the restaurants around there, as they do on a fairly regular basis. And I don't really see where that is an issue. So I would wholeheartedly support this application.
Amy.
All right. So I, I, I think I, I generally agree with what was just said. I don't see the parking as an issue or the loading as an issue, front loading happens at many other establishments, it's already stated. And I generally, I do support this application. I do, though, have a, I have concerns that I don't know or if, if they're specific, I asked the question before, but I do have concerns about that lock on the back gate and the fire safety of that situation, as well as, you know, there were statements made about the oil that's stored there now that it's going to be removed. Can, can we make any kind of, I guess this is a Rob question, can we make any kind of specifications that we support as long as, you know, those things happen? Or, or is that, you know, not, again, our jurisdiction?
No, you, you can certainly, if you are inclined to approve an application, you can approve, approve it with whatever conditions you feel are appropriate, that are reasonable, and a reasonable condition would be one, for example, that would serve to mitigate against any detrimental impact caused by the application. So if.
So I, I, so personally, I would say that I would, you know, as a, as a, you know, commercial real estate professional, like, I would certainly be concerned about the fire safety if there were not two clear means of egress to the space. And I think that that needs to be there. I don't think it's necessarily the fault of Bakone South, though, that there's not, from what I can understand. But I think it should be there, and I think it should be, you know, you know, things that were represented by, by Mr. Caruso, that he said he was, you know, going to remove the tank or make sure that everything, you know, any cleaning materials were locked up, but those things do happen. If they're not, or, you know, it's hard to know if they are or not, but certainly the oil tank was established as being there, and I think, you know, he said he would remove it, so it should be. That's my position on that.
Okay, I guess it's my turn, right? I.
Your turn, Joe.
Yeah, my turn, right. I, I will vote against this application on the, on a couple of grounds. The first is that I think that it's not the function of this board. It's the function of the township committee to determine whether or not this setback requirement should be applied to this particular neighborhood. Maybe it should not, but I ask myself this question. If we were to grant the variance that permits the restaurant in this location, what, what application would be turned down? I can't think of one.
Rosie Mike's was.
Well.
Yep.
More or less the exact same.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm saying this very type of restaurant. And the second reason that I find compelling is that I looked at that picture of that unit on the roof. That's a joke. If the wind is blowing toward the neighbors, that, that unit on the roof is totally worthless. And anybody can see that from just looking at it. I, I think that the negative criteria here that cannot be met is whether or not this restaurant substantially impairs the neighborhood. I think it does. And I, listen, I agree, I'm not going to tell you how many years I've been in this town, but it was more than almost everybody spoke, with the exception, well, maybe with the exception of Craig Plutner's family, not Craig Plutner, his family. But as far as I'm concerned, and I also am very concerned, as we all are, about the state of the businesses in Millburn Township, especially after the flood. And, but I look at the testimony here to the effect that this, and I was unimpressed with the fact that the applicant managed to bring a couple of his customers here to tell us how wonderful the food is at this place and how wonderful he is. And by the way, I think he's a good guy, generally speaking. On the other hand, he was in this business for years. That's clear. And when he came to town, the very first thing that any reasonable businessman would do would be to ask his attorney the question. And he would say to the attorney, is there anything I want to know about whether or not I can lease this property for a restaurant? And either here, his attorney would head to Town Hall in two seconds flat. And the first place they would go to would, would be the zoning officer. That wasn't done here. Clearly, it was not. And I think that I'm unimpressed with the bona fides of the applicant. But it's really not important to me that the, the bona fides of the applicant don't cut it. What is really important to me is that I don't want to be part of a vote that in effect changes the zoning requirements for this particular part of town, which is what we would be doing if we voted to approve this application. What application would we deny to uphold the ordinance? Yeah, sure, we, it would be an application for a nightclub that stayed open till two at night. But there is a difference between this, this restaurant and the, and the, and the prior, I'm not talking about the immediately prior, but I'm talking about the restaurant, the luncheonette that was there years ago, which closed at around noon time or sometime maybe around one o'clock. But then, this, in any event, I've said enough. I'm not happy with the import of the ordinance on this particular location. On the other hand, I don't think it's our job to change the ordinance. I think it's our job to look, to see whether or not a particular applicant has made a strong case for not applying the ordinance in his particular case. I don't think that case has been made here tonight and the prior nights. What I'm really worried about, Eileen, is what are we going to do with these other applications? In November, December, January.
Okay, I think Wolfgang wanted to talk.
I just wanted to say. Yeah, I, I've gone back and forth in my mind, you know, several dozen times, and I'll listen to all this testimony. And I just come, I keep coming back to the idea that there is definitely negative repercussions to the residents near this, this restaurant. That's, that, that's clear. There, there's a condition, there's this, there's a setback distance for a reason, and I think we've heard about that tonight. To that point, I would not support the application. I would further say that, given the, you know, the volume and intensity of testimony that we heard this evening, it's pretty clear that there are procedures in this town that aren't being followed, that are beyond the purview of the zoning board, but there are procedures that aren't being followed. And it seems that this is, this case in particular has become a flashpoint for public grievance on several subjects. Again, that's not for us to opine on, but I would point out that this is, this is in general concerning.
I guess it's time, unless someone feels the absolute necessity to speak, it's time for a motion.
Well, let, let me, let me first, if, unless anyone, any other board member wants to make a comment. The question is whether you want to vote on this application, first with regard to the use variance and then the bulk variances, or whether you want to do it all together. Understand, but, but I think, but I think that you have to, you're going to have to do it separately because one's five affirmative votes and one's a majority.
Exactly. Let's take the two that require a majority.
Is there anybody else that wanted to speak?
I, I just have a question. I mean, do, do alternates, we don't vote on this, right, the alternates?
No.
No, we have, everyone else is.
Okay.
So, Eileen, just, just state who is, who is not eligible to vote on the application.
All the full members are eligible. So everyone is voting except the alternate.
And, and the alternate, so the public knows the alternates are.
So the alternates are Amy Lawrence and Shandru Harjani, they will not be voting on the matter.
Thank you.
It is.
Did anybody else wanted to speak? I don't know. Did anyone else have their hand raised?
So this is going to be.
First on the two variances relating to the parking and the, I'm sorry, the other one.
Do you see variances?
Loading.
Loading.
It's loading dock, yeah.
Wouldn't you take the D variance first? Because if that one doesn't pass, then nothing.
D variance first.
We can do that.
Move approval of the use variance.
Second.
Is that Jessica?
Yes.
Thank you. Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
No.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
No.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
No.
Motion fails.
What was the vote, Eileen?
Four three.
Court three, motion failed.
So the application fails on the D variance. The other two, should we, Rob, do you think we need to take a vote on those?
Um, I, I, I think the application itself is, is denied. If Mr. Sukas asks the board to vote on the bulk variances, I think it's fine to take a vote on those. That's up to Mr. Sukas. I, I would appreciate if the board did take a vote on those variances. Thank you.
Is there a motion on the?
Move approval of two variances, outstanding, parking variance along with loading dock variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
No.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
No.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. What is the vote on those two?
Passes four three.
That was five.
Five to two.
Five to two, in favor.
Five to two.
Right. But the, so the application is, is denied as to conditional use variance.
Right. All right, Eileen, can we, you and I talk in the morning?
Well, no, no, Joe, Joe, hold on a second. We, we, we have to deal with all the other applications, first of all, to determine the time period and whether any time period will be running as of midnight tonight or soon thereafter in terms of time of decision. I know that, I think, I think the, in particular, I think that we should hear from Mr. First with regard to Dorfman.
Right.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Other than, Eileen, as you're bringing up Mr. First, other than Dorfman, are there any other applications that we are concerned about in terms of time?
Seven. Kay and Miller, we, the deadline to decide is October twenty-seven. Ox and Horn, October twenty-seven.
Twenty-seventh of.
They're all, the, the deadline to decide is October twenty-seven for all, all four of them. I believe at the last meeting, Mr. First agreed to an extension until somewhere it's here. September. Probably the last day of September. Because we ran out of time.
Mr. First, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much.
Jim, why don't you just send to your appearance on behalf of your client?
James First, F O E R S T, Law Offices Inspector First and Associate, on behalf of the applicant Scott Dorfman.
Right, the, at the last, you, you, you've been here all night.
Mr. Steinberg, at the last meeting where Mr. Drill had filled in, literally was here for four hours, logged on today at six fifty-five, sat here watching this entire application. All of my professionals are in the background, in the audience. We would like to be heard tonight if possible. I have architects and a land use engineer, I'm sorry, a civil engineer. It would be our preference to be heard tonight, but of course, we're not gluttons. We understand that you're all volunteers and we know that we need five affirmative votes. So would it be better for us to get those at seven o'clock on October fourth? I have a feeling it might be, but my client also is requesting that we proceed tonight if the board would allow that.
Well, we've never carried this board beyond eleven o'clock.
Understood.
And we're not going to do that tonight even. And we're well beyond eleven now, right?
It is eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen, eleven fourteen.
I haven't even started to prepare my dinner yet. I missed dinner.
I missed Dancing with the Stars, it was the season premiere.
That's right.
I, for whatever it's worth, I would be willing to hang out, just to stay and hear this if other people wanted to, just.
I think, I think you guys should stay, because I have to get off this case, because it's my neighbor, so I think you guys, I think you guys should hammer this one out. The greatest case is the one you recuse yourself.
After you, so I think, I think you should go to one AM, I mean.
You're going to go to sleep right now.
Well, the, the only issue, I mean, I don't have, I, the problem was, this agenda was still, or Bakone was carried. And so now, I, my October fourth agenda is still, my October eighteenth agenda is still, my November first agenda is still, because you carried other applications from other meetings, I mean, I don't even.
Well, Eileen, we're, Eileen, we're going to have to hear this application on the first meeting in November.
Well, well, wait a second.
I would not be able to consent to that, Mrs. Steinberg.
Yeah, I mean, I think that what should happen here is that, you know, if I can speak freely, is that this matter should be with Mr. First consent, in terms of an extension of time on behalf of his client, to be carried to the first meeting in October, that October, what is it, the fourth, whatever that Monday is.
October fourth, Mrs. Steinberg.
Right, and, and then, and then they'd be put first on the agenda, and, and we, and we get through it.
I, I agree with that.
That would be acceptable to the applicant, to extend the time of decision rule until October fourth, at which time we would like to be heard on that date.
It will be heard first on that date.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg.
F-first, F O E R S.
I've, I've heard him, if that's what gets me to the front of the line, I'm fine with it.
That's what gets you to the front of the line. Okay. Are there any, are there any other matters to come before the board that are not on the agenda?
So, 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 Eileen, with regard to the other four matters, are we carrying them? I, I, we're going to have to carry them to a date prior to October twenty-seventh.
I'm really straight, everybody, I don't want to.
Well.
Thank you guys. Wait, 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 wait a second.
First of all, state on the record that your matter will be heard, which is application number thirty-seven.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, thirty-seven ninety-two dash twenty-one will be heard on October, what is the date, Eileen?
Fourth.
Fourth, without further notice, without further publication. And it will be, and it'll be carried on the basis that the applicant has agreed, says correctly, Mr. First.
That is correct, thank you, Mr. Steinberg.
An extension of time to October the fifth.
I'll confirm that in an email to Ms. Davin and Mr. Simon in the morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
And, and, and just so we're clear, that carried meaning will be to a Zoom platform hearing, correct, Eileen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
And with regard to the other meeting.
I agree with you, Rob, I think these other matters have to be heard first. After his, after Mr. First matter, the Dorfman matter, will have to be heard on the fourth.
Well, what do you want me to do with the five that are already on?
Yeah, I mean, well, can, Eileen, does it help if some of them can be heard on the eighteenth, if we have until the twenty-seventh?
I have five matters on, on the eighteen.
Those matters are clearly going to have to be, are there any on the eighteenth, where there's a deadline on the twenty-seventh?
Um, I, I don't have that information, I, I would doubt it, I don't have that information in front of me, but, um.
I would doubt it. We're going to have to carry those matters beyond the, and, and I don't want to force these people to have to pay advertisement fees to re-advertise.
But what, what, what I would, Joe, what I would suggest is this, then, why don't we, why don't we carry all other matters that are on the agenda for tonight, until that Monday, October fourth date? And then, between now and then, we can figure out the calendar, the schedule, and.
That's a good idea.
And the time of decision for each one.
It's very hard right now to sit here and try and.
Yeah, it, it's not fair to Eileen.
Okay, well, we know that Dorfman will be heard first on the, on October the fourth.
So we'll just carry the others for scheduling purposes.
State on the record that Auctionhorn, calendar thirty-eight oh six dash twenty-one, that AHS Hospital Corp., Corp., three eighty-four Millburn Avenue, thirty-eight twelve dash twenty-one, that Erica and Peter K. are calendar thirty-eight twenty dash twenty-one, and Sidra and Fran Miller, calendar thirty-eight twenty-one dash twenty-one, will all be carried to the meeting of October the fourth.
For scheduling purposes only, correct?
For scheduling purposes of two thousand twenty-one. And I want to thank all of you for sitting through this tonight. It wasn't easy, I know that, but thank you for doing it. Mr. Fishman, you, you got paid for this, so, but thank you anyway. And there was no baseball game on tonight, or there was a baseball game.
There was, and I just heard they won, so, the Yankees.
Oh, okay, the Yankees finally won one, okay, good for you. Okay, thank you all very much.
I need a motion to, motion to adjourn.
Any matter, any matter coming before the board tonight that is not on the agenda?
No.
I hear none. So we'll say that there's no new business to be heard tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Blacking.
Second.
That was, yeah, Steve had the second. One in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, bye. Thank you all.
Bye.
Bye.